Good evening, everyone. The May 14th, 2024 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM. This is our last school board meeting before all the graduations happen. So it is a very exciting time for this district and for this community. So I'd just like to extend a warm welcome to everyone here tonight and everyone watching from home. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now read our board commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to this meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remember to turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Good evening, Board Clerk. Please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gullett. Would you please introduce the member of your team who will be helping us with tonight's inspiration and pledge?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. It would be my pleasure. I'm going to introduce Principal Manressa from Hillcrest School, who is going to introduce some very special guests from Hillcrest to kick off our evening for the inspiration and pledge. Thank you, Ms. Manressa, for being here.
Thank you. What a pleasure. Thank you all. Good evening, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair Conrad, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez. It is an honor to be here today and to present some special friends with me. But before I do that, I would like to say, I want to take a moment to share some thoughts on the incredible lessons that we can learn from our special needs students and friends. In the midst of very busy schedules, especially this time of year, and endless tasks, it's easy to overlook profound impacts these children have and make on a daily. They teach us to love in the purest form, unconditional and boundless. They show us patience beyond measure, reminding us to slow down and appreciate each moment. And perhaps most importantly, they light up the path to understanding and acceptance, teaching us that differences are not barriers, but rather opportunities for growth and connection. As educators and leaders in our community, it is our responsibility to create and foster an environment where every child feels seen, heard, and valued. By embracing the unique gifts of our special needs children, we not only enrich their lives, but they enrich ours. So with me today, I have two of my very special friends, Abby Shank. Abby is new to Hillcrest this year and has a contagious smile that warms your heart. If you're ever having a rough day, Abby's your girl. And Raven McLean, and some of our principals here may know Raven, she's pretty popular. She is a graduate and a work-study student that has an incredible talent in art, as featured in our superintendent's art show, FFO, and our very own Hillcrest art show. The progress that she has made at Hillcrest isn't necessarily demonstrated on testing, but rather her determination for independence. So if you would please stand for the pledge, ladies and gentlemen, I welcome Abby and Raven. Raven, this way, honey. Okay, hands over hearts. You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much for allowing us to present today.
Absolutely, and we definitely want to come down and take a picture with you, so we, please don't run away. And not everyone knows this, but I spent 14 glorious years working for Hillcrest School, so it's such a pleasure to see Principal Manressa again, and I represent the school. We all represent all the schools, but we are so fortunate to have this gem among gems in our community. So looking forward to come down and taking a picture with both of you. Is that all right? You ready? Okay, we're coming down.
Thank you.
Perfect. Here we go. And one, two, three, couple more. And one more. And we're good to go. Thank you.
Okay, moving on with our recognitions. Dr. Gullett, I know you have more information on who's going to be leading our recognition efforts this evening.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, as you recall, we've recognized some of our employees with the longest tenure in our district before. And this year, last year, we did 40 years and more of service. And this year, we're looking at 35 years and more of service to our district and, more importantly, to our students of Marion County. So it's my pleasure to bring Ms. Morant forward, and before she does that, I'm sorry, I'm going to steal a little thunder, because I have some data in front of me. I have to just do a special shout out to someone you're going to recognize. Board, we have an employee with 53 years of experience in Marion County.
Wow.
Right? I think... So, and to all, we're so grateful for your service. Thank you. Ms. Morant, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and I am delighted to be joined by Mr. Christian. So thank you, Dr. Gullett, Chair Thrower, and School Board Members. A major focus of the strategic plan for Marion County Public Schools is Goal 3, Talent Management. And aligned with Goal 5, we would like to strengthen the recognition of employees' longevity and contributions. It is our belief that recruiting and retaining the right people in the right positions, providing support, and growing the capacities of all employees will help ensure that every student succeeds. We continue to promote Marion County and Marion County Public Schools, expand our recruiting opportunities, and grow our own. As a part of this work, it is our pleasure to recognize and celebrate 50 of our team members that have more than 35 years of consecutive service with the district. Their service to the district contributes to student success in a tremendous way, and we are appreciative of their hard work and continued dedication to our students. Some of our honorees are unable to join us tonight, but we still will, we will still acknowledge each of them. We ask that our awesome team members that are being recognized tonight, that are present with us, come forward to receive their certificate from Mr. Kevin Christian, as their name is called, and then join us at the front of the stage. So Dr. Gullett took some of the thunder, but we are very excited to acknowledge Ms. Lana Phillips, who's a secretary at Ward Highlands Elementary, celebrating 53 years of service. Michael Michigan, a school psychologist, 42 years. Debbie Model, Clerk Generalist at Bellevue High School, 42 years. Renetta Butler, a food service worker at North Marion Middle, 41 years. Janine Grover, inclusion teacher at South Ocala Elementary, 41 years. Audrey Kernan, first grade teacher at Fort McCoy School, 41 years. Lilia Roberts, a kindergarten para Ward Highlands Elementary, 41 years. Kimberly Rowland, a secretary in our technology office, 41 years. Chris Sandy, principal at Oak Crest Elementary, 41 years. Charles Stiegel, environmental safety specialist, 40 years. Patty Weeks, a first grade teacher at Saddlewood Elementary, 40 years. Cindy Lee Chavant, a special needs para with ESE curriculum, 39 years. Priscilla Deshaun, a language arts ESOL teacher at Forest High, 39 years. Deborah Greer, college success coach with the Public Ed Foundation, 39 years. Judith McCamley, a math teacher with Marion Virtual, 39 years. Robert Paramore, a minor maintenance repairman with Technical Services, 39 years. Tamara Smith, a PE technician with Ward Highlands Elementary, 39 years. Charlotte Swineheart, content area specialist at Harborview Elementary, 39 years. Robert Dugan, food services manager, Shady Hill Elementary, 38 years. Deborah Folsom, language arts teacher, Forest High School, 38 years. Daniel Gilman, science teacher, Vanguard High, 38 years. Carol Kreitmeyer, intervention teacher, Reddick Collier Elementary, 38 years. Sherri Ann Simmons, budget specialist with Finance and Budgeting, 38 years. Melinda Boatright, media specialist, Bellevue Elementary, 37 years. Rebecca Barlison, special needs para, Harborview Elementary, 37 years. Carol Cameron, content area specialist with Region 2, 37 years. Mary Drea, diesel gas mechanic, Transportation, 37 years. Kimberly Dunn, fifth grade teacher, Dr. NH Jones Elementary, 37 years. Holly Dyer, instructional coach, Oak Crest Elementary, 37 years. Richard Gideon, assistant HVAC foreman, Technical Services, 37 years. Leslie Johnson, special needs para, Ocala Springs, 37 years. Terry Jones, instructional para, Liberty Middle, 37 years. Jeffrey Knight, a painter in Tech Services, 37 years. Deborah Cox, food services manager, Dunellin High School, 37 years. Deborah White, second grade teacher, Pheasant Elementary, 37 years. Kara Kreitmeyer, intervention teacher, Reddick Collier Elementary, 38 years. Sherri Ann Simmons, budget specialist with Finance and Budgeting, 38 years. Melinda Boatright, media specialist, Bellevue Elementary, 37 years. Rebecca Barlison, special needs para, Harborview Elementary, 37 years. Carol Cameron, content area specialist with Region 2, 37 years. Mary Drea, diesel gas mechanic, Transportation, 37 years. Kimberly Dunn, fifth grade teacher, Dr. NH Jones Elementary, 37 years. Holly Dyer, instructional coach, Oak Crest Elementary, 37 years. Richard Gideon, assistant HVAC foreman, Technical Services, 37 years. Leslie Johnson, special needs para, Ocala Springs, 37 years. Terry Jones, instructional para, Liberty Middle, 37 years. Jeffrey Knight, a painter in Tech Services, 37 years. Deborah Cox, food services manager, Dunellin High School, 37 years. Deborah White, second grade teacher, Pheasant Elementary, 37 years. Latisha Bell, instructional para, Bellevue Santos Elementary, 36 years. Rusty Corley, interim principal, North Marion Middle, 36 years. Pam Giedis, kindergarten teacher, Eighth Street Elementary, 36 years. Paul Hicks, a parts technician and purchasing, 36 years. Janine Johnson, program manager with Marion Technical College, 36 years. Pamela Keels, second grade teacher, Ocala Springs Elementary, 36 years. Jacqueline McCoy, zone coordinator with Transportation, 36 years. Michael Mills, pest control technician with our Safety Inspection Department, 36 years. Rosa Kincaid Mobley, a bus eight, Transportation, 36 years. Helen Popoloski Brown, second grade teacher, Emerald Shores Elementary, 36 years. Suzie Rainey, secretary, Eighth Street Elementary, 36 years. Judy Roberts, info processing clerk, IPC, Osceola Middle, 36 years. Linda Walker, bus driver, Transportation, 36 years. And Laura White, pioneer, food services manager, Oak Crest Elementary, 36 years. And we are so thankful for the years of services that we have from these employees. These employees represent a combined total of more than 1,900 years of dedication, commitment, sacrifice, consistency, and faithfulness to Marion County Public Schools in ensuring that every student succeeds.
Oh my goodness. Oh my, my. We definitely want to come down and take a picture.
Turn around, yep.
Yes, yes, but before we come down and take a picture, definitely want to take a moment to acknowledge all of you, whether you're with us in person or not, and the principals that have been able to be here with you, and family, and friends. It's impossible to really convey the depth of the gratitude, and to have a career with Marion County Public Schools certainly has its ups and downs, but I certainly wouldn't trade it for anything else, and evidently you guys wouldn't either. And it's just amazing, and we are so grateful, and you're so recognizable. I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to share their own thanks. We'll start with Attorney Powers.
May I just, I just have a little cross-examination question for Dr. Michigan there.
Uh-oh.
Dr. Michigan, by my math, 42 years, that indicates you've started this district in about 1982. Is that about right? It's not right. When did you start with the district?
We're between 1976 and 1978. What was your age when you started? How old were you? You just won't stay down.
That's a thorough answer, sir. And Dr. Michigan actually did some evaluations for me when I was, when I was an elementary school student, so that should make you feel old. Yeah, that's Spire Elementary, and he remembers, yes. He made a note, I later looked at my record, he made a note that he showed me a picture of an airplane, and I, and asked a question, I started talking about the Orville, the Wright Brothers' first flight. And so I think that the board would say that I haven't really changed much, I still go way on too long, so... But thank you, Dr. Michigan, and thank you to everybody here for everything that you've done for all these years, for all these students. You've changed more people than you know, you've changed their lives, so thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Yes, we'll just go down the line.
Well, I just, everyone here is so special. It always warms my heart when I have like personal relationships with some of the individuals. And I shared with someone earlier, I said, we don't, I don't really know even what recognitions we're doing, because it doesn't say in our agenda. I'm just so excited for the surprise when it happens, and so this is wonderful. And I, you know, worked with Ms. Model at Bellevue. I thought you retired, didn't you, when you came back? Okay, so she's on her second, second opportunity too. I know Ms. Sandy, I think is on her third go at retirement. Mr. Corley's now at North Marion, so thankful for him stepping up and filling that void while Mr. Johnson has to be out. And so Ms. Cameron worked with my mom, and there's just so many wonderful people here. So just grateful for your, your commitment to the service here. So grateful, so thank you.
Listen, what you have given to this district is blood, sweat, and tears, as we like to say it, and it's been a sacrifice, I'm sure, and we truly appreciate all, 1,000 years, 1,000-plus years, almost 2,000 years of experience that we have standing here before us, and it's not just in the classroom, it's from all areas of the district. So we appreciate, I truly appreciate you, because some of you, that means some of you were in, were working when I was in school, and that's, that's a long time. So, as you can see, the gray hairs are coming out now, so, so that, I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, to the one that was 53 years that could not be here, truly an accomplishment, truly an accomplishment. So you guys should be proud of yourselves, and the rest of us are truly proud of you. So thank you.
I just look out here, and I'm extremely, extremely grateful for the faces that I see. Some are familiar, some are not. Just like Nancy Thrower said, there are hard days, and there are good days, and your commitment to the children of Marion County is priceless, and so I'm just truly thankful as I, as I look out at faces that I recognize and I know the struggles that we've all gone through, the ups and downs, and so I just really am grateful that you've stuck with us, and what a benefit you've been to the children of Marion County. Thank you.
Thank you, and just thanks for the multiple tours of duty that some of you are doing and continue to do. For, for Campbell.
Sure. Yeah, I love the idea, first of all, that we've started honoring longevity within this district. I mean, I'm super grateful that's something Dr. Gullett has enacted here. Thank you all for all that you have done to impact students and this district. The student of 2024 looks very different than a student of 1994, and some of you have seen that full array of what that looks like, and even beyond 1994. But as I recently celebrated my 30th class reunion, I know what the students looked like back then. And what I also appreciate about the folks standing here is, again, not just from the classroom, we've got transportation folks, we've got from the bus garage, we've got painters, we've got folks in finance, administration, special needs paras. The full gamut right here, this is a good example to show students, there is a future for you in Marion County Public Schools, because there, anything you want to do, you can do right here in this school system. So thank you all so much for all that you have done, and all the lives that you have truly changed, mine included. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. Well, clearly there's a mistake, because the folks in front of us are not old enough to have that many years of experience. What a sharp-looking group. Clearly, we're hiring when they're elementary school. But seriously, I imagine the stories that you all could tell, and the, you heard the board talk about trials and tribulations, but I do hope that with all the wisdom that you all have in this group here, that you share that with others, that you're helping others along the way and giving back to them, because I know that everyone who's working with you and alongside of you is grateful for that wisdom and everything that you have offered. I am grateful on behalf of 45,000 students for all of the ways that you have served them throughout the years and continue to serve, and the fact that you are not just continuing to work with us, but that you're here tonight, really, again, shows your commitment to serving every one of our students, and incredibly grateful, blessed to have you as part of our team. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Martinez, I know you were working on a little technical glitch there, but I didn't want to leave you out. Certainly, you've been with us a while as well.
I know most of you, and you all do a vital part to our school, to our students, to our employees, so for all of that, I also am very thankful for all of you. Thank you.
Yep, we're gonna come down and take a picture.
I'm good. Look at you. When you gonna retire? I got two.
When I heard her name, I was like, oh.
It's like a giant reunion. But sadly, we have to go on. So we have one more round of recognitions this evening, and Dr. Gullett, if you would please share who will help us with this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to do so. Dr. Livinggood, if she can hear me. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Livinggood's gonna come forward, and she is going to introduce some very special students who participated in the Circle Up essay contest.
Right.
And they're ready. Yes.
Thank you. I couldn't hear you, because it was still so exciting in the back. Good evening, Chair Thrower, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I have the privilege of bringing Mr. Mark Ingram to the podium this evening. He is a coordinator of K-12 academics, and he will recognize some very special writers this evening. So thank you.
Evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. Tonight, I'm here to present the winners of the Circle Up essay contest, a continuation of the Bridges Project essay contest. The Circle Up Center for Practical Peacebuilding is a nonprofit corporation that promotes and teaches best peacebuilding practices to increase compassion, connection, and our capacity for turning conflict into opportunities for growth. As educator Coleman McCarthy said, "If we don't teach our children peace, someone else will teach them violence." Circle Up is represented tonight by co-founders Corinne Dean and Cindy Grimes. The prompt this year was about trust. What does trust mean to you, and how important is it in relationships? What makes someone trustworthy? How can trust be regained once it has been broken? How can trust be regained once it has been broken? What are some practices or habits you could put into place to build integrity and trust within yourself? The judges of the essay contest were Kim Martsoff, Assistant Principal of Marion Technical College, Jesse Miller, Local Creative Director and Business Owner, Grady Grimes, Retired Captain with the Marion County Sheriff's Department, and Lieutenant Colonel Tim Dean, Attorney. The caliber of work made it very difficult to choose student-winning essays. Judges focused on several metrics, including how well instructions were followed, technical writing skills, how thoroughly the questions were answered, and the personalization or voice of the essays. Winners are receiving $150 or $25 gift cards, depending on their place, from Circle Up. I'd like the winners to come up and receive their awards, as they're called. Starting with middle school, in third place was Carter Buck, 6th grade at Howard. He's in Ms. Ernest's class. Ms. Ernest's class led with submissions, over 65 submissions for Ms. Ernest's class.
Not surprised.
Second place is Annabelle Newman, 7th grader at Fort King, in Ms. Crocker's class. And in first place for middle school is Luca Minjivar, 6th grader at Osceola. He's in Ms. Ayers' class. And then our high school winners. Third place is Teresia Bryson, Teresia Bryson, I'm sorry, 12th grader, MTI with Ms. Jamerson. Second place was Haley Murphy, who is also at MTI with Ms. Jamerson in 10th grade. And then first place was Jenna Johnson, a 10th grader at Westport. And she was in Ms. Valson and Ms. Benson Haver's class. Thank you, winners.
Absolutely. Thank you. Students, before we come down to take a picture with you, you're welcome to turn around so we can give you a bunch of compliments and acknowledgements and also to your teachers and, and the Bridges Project, the Circle Bridge. And, and everyone, your families that is just associated with, was supporting you and, and helping raise you to have the types of ideas that you shared on paper is really commendable. And it means a lot to us as a school board to see these types of, of projects and to get a chance to see all of your talents. So, thank you very much for coming out tonight. And we know you're busy and, but the fact that you came here to spend a little time with us so we can acknowledge you really means a lot. So we'll come down and take a picture, okay?
Beautiful together. There you go. Beautiful. All right, here we go. Everybody's looking right here in the middle. One, two, three, couple more. And one more.
More cameras.
Wait a minute. Sorry. Look over here, please, children and adults. Thanks. Great job.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I wanted to say thank you.
Fabulous. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
I won the six winning ones. Beautiful.
Congratulations again.
Very interesting story. You're not going to share with me what they're going through.
Had a bag of those today.
I have to say, these recognitions are so much fun. We've really had some great ones. And it's fun to see everyone together, just enjoying fellowship and catching up on, with employees and friends I haven't seen for a while. Pretty cool stuff. All right, we will continue to move on and now we're going to move into recognizing donations, which is another great thing. Tonight, we have three donations to recognize. $1,000 to Forest High School from Citizens First Bank to be awarded as a scholarship to a 2024 graduate who will attend a Florida college. $8,794.80 to North Marion High School from Northside Champions Club to support girls and boys golf programs. $1,000 to North Marion High School from TEC Diversified Incorporated to support their JROTC programs. All right, and that concludes the recognition portion of our meeting tonight. And we will continue on our agenda. Dr. Gullett, would you please make a recommendation on tonight's school board meeting agenda?
Certainly will. Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 14, 2024, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of the following items: D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, D-24.4, D-24.5, D-24.6, D-24.7, D-24.8, D-24.9, D-24.10, D-24.11, and D-24.12 that have been placed under discussion, as well as C-23.6 that has been pulled and placed under the category of pulled discussion items. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. We have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation. Motion by Vice Chair Conrad, second by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 28, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 9, 2024, school board meeting?
So move.
Motion by Board Member Cummings. Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 11, 2024, special school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell. Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 11? Ooh, that looks like we did that twice. April 11, 2024. Okay. We just voted on that. Oh, the special. I knew that was going to get me. And you know what the worst thing is? I had already reviewed it. All right. We have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 11, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Cummings. Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And Ms. Martinez warned me about that, too. And I still did it. All right. Ms. Martinez, would you please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting, ma'am?
Notice for the May 14, 2024, school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on May 3, 2024. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you, ma'am. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening. Attorney Powers?
Thank you. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. This evening, speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families is also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
None this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to Item 9.1, which is our public hearing for recommended instructional materials. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2023-2024 Recommended Instructional Materials for Adoption of Specified Courses? I don't think we received any, and I don't see anyone here coming towards the podium. So I think we're, we are good. We will move forward. We'll be voting on this at the next meeting? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to some informational items. The next one is federally funded subaward and grant agreement for DR-4734 Hurricane Adalia. This is information only per Board Policy 6110. The superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any federal grant application on behalf of the school district. Moving on to Item 10.2, another informational item. This is for the installation of a standby generator and reconfiguration of electrical systems at Northwest Transportation Compound. It's change order number one, work authorization number three, project number 21-112. The next informational item is per Board Policy 6345. The superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract amount by $25,000 or less, or that will decrease the construction amount. We'll move on now. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items C-12.1 through C-23.8, with the exception of Items D-24.1, D-24.2, D-24.3, D-24.4, D-24.5, D-24.6, D-24.7, D-24.8, D-24.9, D-24.10, D-24.11, and D-24.12 that have been placed under discussion, and Item C-23.6 that has been pulled and placed under discussion. May I have a motion, please? Motion by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. We'll now move on to our discussion items. This first one is D-24.1. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment with College Board Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell. Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item costs $330,000 and it would, with your approval, would pay for advanced placement SATs, school day opportunities for the concordant comparative scores for our students to be able to obtain the test criteria for SATs for high school graduation. So this is allowing them the opportunity to take those tests and with the hope that that will give them the requirements they need to graduate.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay, we're hearing none. I think it's wonderful that we're willing to do this if it's approved. So because we are the size of Rhode Island, some students, it's very difficult for them to get to testing sites. And this way, they can take it during the school day. So that's a wonderful convenience and opportunity. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Moving on to D-24.2. May I have a motion to approve the first renewal with Reed Naturally Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad. Second by Board Member Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Again, thank you briefly. Thank you, board. This, the cost for this item, if you choose to approve this renewal is for $250,000. And it provides necessary resources for reading, for struggling readings, readers, so that as an intervention, they have research-based strategies. And so this, this program particularly supports 2nd through 5th grade students.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board?
Yes. I just want to say, I previously used this program in my classroom and it was very beneficial. I'm happy to see that it's on the agenda and it's a great resource for our teachers just because you can get different levels of reading activity with great content. For maybe your struggling readers, it could also be used for enrichment, I'll just say. But anyway, just thankful to see this coming forward. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion from the board? Echo teacher Vice Chair Conrad's sentiments, Reed Naturally's been around for a while. It's tried and true. Yes, now it's digital, coming up. All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the first renewal with Curriculum Associates LLC? This is Item 24.3. Motion, please? Motion by Vice Chair Conrad, second by Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And a lot of this is also in our rationale that's posted on board docs. So I think it's important to note, it costs $1.2 million. However, what we get for this is, again, intervention program, reading, mathematics, very popular with a lot of teachers, requests for the use of a toolbox that has a lot of the lessons in it. And this is geared towards our, our students kindergarten through 5th grade. It also provides an opportunity for us to have a diagnostic score for students that are trying to meet good cause for 3rd grade. And so another piece of this I wanted to highlight as you're considering this item is it also provides access to a program platform called Elevation. And that provides support to our bilingual students and language acquisition. So again, enhancing our second language learners and ensuring that they have the support they need as they acquire English language in our classrooms.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board on this item?
Just, sorry, Chair, thank you. Again, I just want to say, a program that I've used in the classroom and really appreciate the opportunity to use it. I found it very helpful. And it is a program that a lot of our instructional staff reach out. It's important to them and the work that they're doing. So I just, I'm grateful again that it's on the agenda. the agenda, and we continue to make strides towards student excellence.
Fantastic. Is there any other discussion from the Board? My only comment is that we've only done three discussion items. We're already up to close upwards of $2 million. So, you know, that's what it takes, and that's what we're approving. Or we'll see what we say about this one. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to D24.4. May I have a motion to approve the first renewal with Teacher Created Materials Incorporated? Move by Board Member Cummings swiftly. Second by Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Certainly. Again, briefly, Board, this cost for this item is $1 million, another big ticket, but it serves our students across the district. Includes summer programming, supplies, materials, resources, access, including summer scholars program, language power, building vocabulary. We-- it involves listening, speaking, reading, and writing, which are fundamental, and so again, supports the state-of-the space instruction in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the Board? Okay, kind of all along the same vein. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to 24.5. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Ocala Consulting and Prevention LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes. Again, thank you, Board. This-- this item is another million-dollar request. However, little bit different, but much-needed support for our students, and this pertains to mental health services and support, which is required by the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. As we all know, it happened in 2018. So this provides necessary support to our students, especially in our Tier III, in our highest need for that mental health intervention. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion or comment from the Board? Hearing none. I'm glad that we're able to provide these needed and legally required services. It comes at a price, but it's well worth it. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Moving on to 24.6. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment with United Way of Marion County Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share?
At this point, Madam Chair, I just want to say we're grateful and hope the Board will support the Second Amendment, and I'm sure you see them as well as I do in the schools, in the classroom. I'm always running across a Reading Pal, and we appreciate it. We are very appreciative of United Way, the Reading Pal program, of all the support they provide to our students. And a little bit of data here, we have 129 volunteers through Reading Pals, and they serve 190 students pre-K and kindergarten. So much-- much appreciated support of those volunteers that read with our students and help them with their literacy. Thank you.
Fantastic, Dr. Gullett. And I'm not sure if I missed the dollar amount. We've been rolling along with those. It's all volunteer.
Correct, all volunteer in our dollar amount. Should have said that up front, though, shouldn't I? Thank you.
And that's important to highlight, too, you know, the support that we get from the community and with our partnerships. And Board Member Campbell, I--
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you. So as a member of the United Way Education Vision Council, we get a report every month from Jan and how amazing this program is in our schools. And I'm just grateful, again, this, again, is coming at no cost to the district, and we have more than 120 volunteers in our classrooms every day practically, at least somewhere along the way. And so it really has been a great benefit to our students, and just looking forward to continued partnership.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Any other comments from the Board? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0 with gratitude. All right, moving on to 24.7. May I have a motion to approve the second renewal with Skyward Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad. Second by Board Member Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The cost for this item requested is $720,000. I would say less exciting than the others, but certainly necessary, a renewal for business and student management systems, otherwise known as Skyward. That's what this is about, for our students and our business systems. Thank you.
Every good organization needs a backbone. All right, is there any discussion from the Board on this item? Thank you, Mr. Benvenuti, for all you do to keep us going behind the scenes. There's nothing more. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Moving on to 24.8. May I have a motion to approve the standard agreement with Cengage Learning Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. The request for this item is a cost of $250,000, and this provides databases so that we can have students and teachers, faculty members can access information for supporting our career and technical education programs in particular. And so we appreciate anything we could do to have textbooks offered through this, materials, and just a resource library.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion or comment from the Board? Okay, hearing none. We will keep funding our career and technical education programs with this vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. All right, moving on to 24.9. May I have a motion to approve the replacement of HVAC chilled water piping and variable air volume units at Buildings 4 and 6 at Lake Shore High School, Project 24-123. May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, do you have information to share regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the request speaks for itself, but just to reiterate, it costs us almost 4.7 million to maintain the aging buildings, and this in particular, for just those two buildings, to address the HVAC. Thank you.
Okay. Any comment or discussion from the Board?
I just have one comment, only because I've brought something similar up previously. I can read this, and I understand it, but I just want to confirm, and Ms. Dobins can just do a head nod, but underground piping means that we're not going to come into the same mishap that we did with North Marion Middle, being that that was-- okay, I get a head nod. Just wanted to make sure. So we're addressing an underground problem and then addressing AC, and it won't coincide with like the roof situation that we experienced at North Marion. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Absolutely. Not to get away from putting a finger in the deck.
Yes.
All right, any other comment, discussion from the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Moving on to 24.10. May I have a motion to approve the revised job description for Director of Safety and Security?
So move.
Move by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Ms. Morant, our Executive Director for Human Resources is here, and she is actually going to present an update on this item and this request of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening again, Dr. Gullett, Chair, Thrower, and School Board members. The district requests approval of the revised job description for the Director of Safety and Security, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2023. By approving the job description, the incumbent will be eligible for Florida Retirement System, or FRS, special risk class membership, effective July 1, 2019. The estimated cost for retroactive employer contributions for the aforementioned timeframe is approximately $64,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morant. Okay, any discussion, comments from the Board? Okay.
Chair, I do have one comment that's somewhat unrelated to this, because we-- if we want to vote on this, then that's fine. I mean, voting on this before the comment, but what this item has also identified when we're talking special risk, FRS, is that when we also change job descriptions and now have additional sworn law enforcement officers within Marion County Public Schools, the team automatically put them in the special risk FRS category. And while that is a statutory opportunity, I'm not certain that this Board weighed in on that. And so I think if we, Chair, if we just reach consensus tonight, that we understand that the difference in the FRS of a traditional employee is 13.57%, but the special risk FRS is 32.67%. And we do have, in addition to Mr. McFadden, the Director of Safe-- or Executive Director now, but in addition to this position, there are four other individuals that are receiving that. The reason I bring that up is because there are only a handful of positions within the district that do get an additional FRS category. The superintendent, statutorily, the Board, statutorily, you may remember last year when Attorney Powers was renegotiating his contract, he also negotiated for the extra FRS that's afforded special management classes. But with this one, this is an opportunity that we certainly can do, but I'm not certain. I don't recall, and maybe you all remember something I don't, but I don't recall that conversation occurring at the Board table that all of our sworn law enforcement officers within the Marion County Public School Police Department are also receiving that almost 20% special risk FRS in addition to traditional employees. So I don't-- that's related to this, not related to the vote on this particular agenda item.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Just as a reminder to the Board, we are about to vote on a motion to approve revised job description for Director of Safety and Security, so I think we need to remain focused on that. While I do appreciate the background information. Is there any further discussion from the Board? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Let's see. All right. Dr. Gullett, you've heard Board Member Campbell's comments, so noted, and we'll let Operations, you know, take care of that and--
Consensus? I mean, as long as we all-- with a head nod.
Yes. Believe we're all on the same wave.
I'm sorry. We're on the same page as far as what?
As far as knowing that our-- the rest of our employees that are sworn would be part of this category. To me, it only makes sense. I mean, look what we're asking them to do.
Yes. So Chair, is that something that the Board wants to take a different action on, because that is what has occurred?
Right.
So if the Board-- if the Board wants to advise differently, I think to Dr. Campbell's point of bringing that forward, and I would agree, she-- Board Member Campbell's correct, we did not put a fiscal amount. When that job description came, it didn't have a fiscal amount, because typically, the job descriptions have not. We've reviewed these. We just typically don't have a fiscal impact on the job descriptions. I think noted for the future. If we can do that, we certainly will, and I think where it's appropriate, we will, absolutely. Does the Board want to take any different action based on what was just discussed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Personally, I don't think there's an additional action that needs to be taken. It's already been approved. We know going forward, we need to add the fiscal-- the fiscal implication to the-- to the job description. However, according to statute, a sworn law enforcement officer is a sworn law enforcement officer, which they are entitled to that special additional FRS.
Special risk FRS.
So there's really not a need to have the consensus already done.
Attorney Powers.
Right, and to clarify, they would be--
Let me just second.
I'm sorry. I thought I heard my name.
Yeah, I felt like Board Member James had something to say. I wasn't sure you were done.
No, to be honest, I just were straight tonight, and so I can't see. So I'm leaning forward, because we're all straight, and so it's hard to see what-- who was talking.
We lost our curve. Okay, Attorney Powers.
Yes, ma'am. All law enforcement officers by statute are eligible. It is optional as to which law enforcement officers an agency may choose to-- to provide the FRS benefit. In this case, I understand the choice is made to provide that to all, and that is something that is within the Board's discretion, within Operations' discretion, really.
If I can clarify, I think what Dr. Campbell is asking is, I do agree with Dr. Campbell. I'm not sure that this Board ever had an opportunity to come to agreement or not. And so tonight, she's saying, do we all agree that this is what we want to do? So I will start by saying I do agree that this is what we should do, and I feel-- I feel confident in moving forward in that direction. Reverend Cummings?
I already made my statement.
Okay, I think he agrees.
Vice Chair.
I agree also.
Yes, yes. And I certainly am in agreement as well.
And I agree too, but as we were all just in a training-- oh, not all of us, but a handful of us were in a training recently, where it became very abundantly clear that if there is a fiscal responsibility on the Board, and there is something that has financial implications, and the Board hasn't taken action on that, then we need to rectify it. And so that was the purpose of bringing it up this evening, because to my recollection, we had not weighed in on this, though it had occurred in July. And without a law enforcement background, I didn't understand what the differences were in special risk and all that anyway, until this item came to light. And so then that's highlighted that discrepancy that we've now rectified.
And let me say this, too. Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for that, because maybe people don't understand the FRS system, but based on what class you're in, there are additional. We get something different. Ms. Morant, can you-- can you kind of come down real fast and go through them for the record, so everybody know where everybody is, the superintendent, the attorney, and the Board members?
And if I may, Madam Chair, while-- while Ms. Morant's coming forward, I would like to make sure that we're clear about this being about FRS classifications, because I don't want the word benefits to be of conversation, and because that changes from job description to job description. I don't want that to be unclear, so that we are not fulfilling the Board's desire to see that. Was I clear about that?
And I'm just asking--
So we're specific about what would be included as a fiscal impact, is what I'm asking. Okay.
Right. I'm just asking for this, because sometimes people think someone is getting something they're not supposed to get. We all get something different based on the position that we're in, and based on what law says. Am I saying it correct, Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So Ms. Morant, can you give us those categories, please?
So normal, regular class is 13.57%. Senior management is 34.52%. Claimed retirement or dropped individuals, 21.13%. Return retirees, 6.78%, and elected officials, 58%.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Morant.
Thank you.
If-- I have one further question. Can you say what the percent is of? Because percent is a very-- percent of what? Because when we're talking about what we're going to put on the job description, unless you know what the person is making, and the person is completely dependent on their previous work experience and all of that, it's very-- I would actually say that it's-- it would be completely inaccurate of us to put a dollar amount attached to a forecasted future job description. But I do think, to the point of Dr. Campbell, we could put the percentage for FRS contribution, since that is what this conversation is about. But can you explain percentage of what?
Of their salary.
Okay, and that's annually?
So I think it-- I'll look to Dr. Gullett. So it's paid each time-- is it paid bi-weekly, or is it paid on an annual basis?
Annual.
Mm-hmm. And when do we make the contributions?
So it's based on their annual salary, and the contributions are made monthly.
Okay, thank you. So I think probably, to Dr. Campbell's point, when we're talking about the job description and the fiscal impact, I think for all job descriptions, we could put the, technically, the FRS contribution, because what percentage of that contribution is the district responsible for? And then part of that the employee also is responsible for, depending on when they joined FRS, pre or post 2011. It gets very convoluted very quickly, so.
So the percentage that I shared is the district's contribution. As employees, our contribution is 3%. But I would like to clearly understand the request of the Board going forward with job descriptions, and what it is you're asking that we add to that fiscal impact, just the percentage. So if it's just a normal job description, we would just put 13.57 FRS percentage. And the only reason I'm asking that, I don't know that this is a bit much, because then this isn't the only cost associated. You have-- also have benefits costs, which we also cannot estimate, because you don't know if an employee is going to take benefits, if they're going to take it for themselves, for their family, one of the four different categories. So my request, again, I will do whatever is the pleasure of the Board, is that we don't put that fiscal amount. But if we do have a position that's going to be something outside of the normal retiree contribution, then maybe we add that estimated fiscal amount there. But to try to guesstimate what that would be, it really-- it's hard for us to tell, and even one job description may have one percent. even one job description may have one person in it, or 20 people in it, and we, we just don't know.
So Ms. Moran, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So basically, the way it's set up now, because I've been in this for a while now, the way it's set up now, that's why you have those job classifications. That's why you have career service, that's why you have special risk and high risk and elected, because that entails what percentage you're at when you're in that category, correct?
Right. So, so, yes, to answer your question. So if we can say going forward, that we can maybe identify if it's a position that we're proposing to be special risk, because I'm not, I'm not sure about adding the rest, how that would be beneficial or accurate.
Madam Chair. I just confirm with Ms. Martinez, we, and I didn't think so, we can't put a percentage and dollar amount. So my recommendation would be, we put that in the rationale. If there's a difference in the risk classification, in the classification, excuse me, FRS classification, we could note that in the rationale. It's, it's not very common, but we could certainly put it in there if that's acceptable to the Board.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board Member Campbell.
Thank you. So Chair, my recommendation would be that in the actual job description, not in the write-up in, in Board docs, but in the actual job description, only for those that are in this special class. So we're talking five job descriptions at this point, that they have, in where we have salary schedule with a number, just a line below that says, "Special Risk FRS Pay." And that would at least alert us when we are reviewing job descriptions.
It didn't say that?
It did not. So the job descriptions for those individuals, including the one we just approved, did not include language about special risk FRS. And I do want to, again, reiterate what something Attorney Powers said. Special risk FRS is optional, eligible. It is eligible, but it's optional for the folks that are voting on those who are eligible. There are sworn law enforcement officers in Marion County that do not receive special risk FRS.
Aren't they doing like desk jobs of?
I, I understand. I'm making a statement to say, I'm sorry, Chair Thrower.
Sorry. I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
I, I understand. Well, folks in emergency management, for example, are sworn law enforcement officers, but they are not. And, and I, I understand the difference, but I'm just making clarification that it, they are eligible, but the Board had not weighed in until just a moment ago, when we reached consensus. And if we move forward with any other category, I mean, Attorney Powers' job description, effective last year, when we gave him the special management FRS, his job description should also include that, now that we've added it. But we didn't in his first three years of his contract, because he's eligible, but we had not voted on that. So that, that's my whole point for bringing it up.
Okay.
So can I ask a question? Just for clarity. So Dr. Campbell, you're asking that for every job description that we give, that we put...
Not everyone.
No, just the five that are different. Well, but then we just mentioned Attorney Powers, who's not special.
Which, I think, if, I don't mean to speak for you, Dr. Campbell, but I think what she's saying is, the vast majority of the employees we employ are going to be at...
Career service.
The career service rate.
Mm-hmm. 13.57, yes.
I would say that for every classification beyond that, which is going to be our senior management, elected officials, safe schools, you're going to have to add in the...
Yeah, special risk, but then there are also individual employees who are claimed retirement or drop, that's not tied to a job description, and also return retirees that are not tied to a job description.
So, but I think, too, if I can, if I can try to say this, I think what she's asking for is the individuals in that senior management class, and then the class that is tied to risk, safety, management, and then the elected, well, we don't have a job description, we're just flying by the seat of our pants over here, so, but, so not us. But those two specific, I think is what she's saying, could we have it added to the salary schedule? Because those two specifically are, are the same for no matter who is sitting in those particular classifications. I totally understand the retirement, and they come back and they serve in a different role, et cetera, and that's unique to the individual. So is that what you're...
Yes. And also, I'm sorry, Chair.
Go ahead.
Senior management classification, absolutely, but again, senior management being eligible. And the only other person that we have voted upon to receive that is Attorney Powers, to my knowledge. Obviously, Dr. Gullett has her own statutory one, we have our own statutory one, senior management Attorney Powers is the only other Board member, or the only other person in the district that has that, and now special risk will be to our sworn law enforcement officers.
Yes.
Yes. You are correct in what my interpretation is, just only those job descriptions where it's beyond the norm.
And then, if it's in the job description, and the job description is Board-approved, then it will be that very evident that the Board has approved and agreed upon paying that amount of money.
And, and just to clarify, because I've heard both thrown out, is it the job description you would like it added to, or the salary schedule, or both? Both have been mentioned.
Job description under the words salary schedule. So in the job description, it gives this, the salary classification with the number, where it'll say like 90, or 85, or whatever. So just one more line down, where it's, that's in that money part of the job description.
So my next follow-up question, so that would impact maybe four or five job descriptions that are already Board-approved. Would you like us to bring that back to the Board for approval, or just update it as a clerical update? Because those, that would be the only change.
Yeah. Right. Board, our Chair, clerical works for me, because we just reached consensus.
Yeah, I'm fine with clerical. We're all in consensus.
Attorney Powers, works for you?
I'm not clear what the, what the question is. There's, there's, we have special risk category.
And senior management.
And senior management, and then...
The others, it's what I'm hearing, we would not add anything to those job descriptions.
We're just adding about five words to five job descriptions.
Okay.
Right?
And that, yeah, I'm aware of, yeah, just the, the Board, and then the Board's two employees are the only others that are outside any other risk category, as far as I'm aware.
Yes.
But you would know better than me.
Correct. But I'd ask, the question that's being asked, is the update that we want to add to your job description and the individuals that we're discussing in safe schools, when we add the line, "Special Risk Category," you know, eligible, or senior management eligible, is that, does that change the job description? Need to come back to the Board for Board approval? Or is that okay to update as a clerical?
Well, FRS require, first of all, statutorily, under, and there's the statute I've got here, it's, it's a 121.0515 that defines special risk class. So what's important there for the job description is that the language be included, and that's why that was put in those job descriptions here, that the language is that it is the establishment of the class, of the class, special risk member means law enforcement officers, and it specifically describes that their duties must be, they must be responsible for arrest, apprehension, there's a number of other, of other terms that they use to describe what the, what the membership in that class is. And it excludes certain individuals as well, for special risk. For senior management, that is, that has its own separate definitions, but the important part was making sure that what the, makes the person eligible for that class be within the job description. That's all.
Correct. So I don't know if we're just not clear about the question. So we're good with the actual job description. So the concern for the Board now is that going forward, if you're looking at the job description, or when it comes forth, that the Board, employees, understand that this position is eligible. We've done what needs to be done in the job description through FRS for that eligibility. So to add that line for awareness is the question we're asking, does that need to come back before the Board? Or can we update that as a clerical? Nothing that we're sending to FRS, but an approved job description here. So those job descriptions have been approved, we're just asking about this one line to add for clarity's sake for, for everyone else.
Well, I would say no, because the determination of whether it's eligible is both statutory and also based on, in some cases, like for special risk or senior management, open negotiation of the position with the Board and the, and the operations. So I don't think you pick any position and say that it is, that is eligible, unless that has been, number one, it meets the statutory requirement, number two, it's been negotiated with Operations and the Board, and number three, that, that item has been, has been noticed and brought before the Board.
Okay. So the job descriptions that we're referencing, we're, we're not talking about this one. We're specifically talking about, and if, we can take yours out, but if we're talking about the ones in safe schools, those, those job descriptions have been approved by the Board, they've also been approved by FRS, and they are eligible, and those employees, as it's been stated and shared, they are receiving it. So I think one and two of your points, those have been accomplished. So I, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the, of Dr. Campbell and the Board, but I'm not clear on the answer to your quest, to the question.
Well, the third eligibility requirement is that it has to be properly advertised. In order to be advertised, it has to go through certain statutory requirements. So, I mean, we're back at square one, but the, I, I can't really answer that question. I can only answer that question to say that yes, the Board should be notified that special risk class is going to be awarded to any position or individual, prior to that individual being placed in that position.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not sure how else to ask the question. Maybe someone else can try.
So we're talking about this written document right here, and in the bottom of the written document, it says salary schedule. I'm looking at the one right now that we just approved, just because it's in front of me. Salary schedule administrative 90. The Board is asking that, immediately below that, on these additional, there's just one extra line that says, "FRS eligible," or "FRS special risk," however you want to word it. And we're asking that, that be updated on the five job descriptions, without them coming before the Board in a new Board meeting agenda item, because we've already approved them, and we've just reached consensus that we want that language there, that they don't need to actually come back before us as a consent agenda item to see just those words.
I can answer your question simply. If you've reached consensus that you want it there, place it there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
There's, there's no legal effect, but if, if that, if that gives, informationally, it needs to be presented to the Board. So when it's presented to the Board at some point, that, I mean, the Board is, has acknowledged its existing employees in that, in that method. So if there was, for example, another person was coming on to a job position which currently has FRS, that, or currently has a special risk designation, for example, whether or not that person is placed in special risk category is still unique to that individual, not to, not necessarily that position, unless, number one, the determination has been made that those duties are going to be extended, that they meet the statutory definition, and that the Board and Operations have decided that that's what they want to do. So for example, the Board could choose later to phase out, from in a job description, to phase out that special risk class membership, or senior management class, or whatever. And if they chose to do that, then having FRS eligible is a little bit misleading on the, but if you want it there, if you can put it there, at least informs you that it would statutorily be at least eligible. But then, I would, I would say that with the State Attorney's Office, for example, and with many governmental attorneys, FRS senior management class is what we are, and the entire State Attorney's Office is, for example, most governmental attorneys are. If you, if you placed however, I, I don't know there's a legal requirement of it, it is something that is, that is decided by the agency head. And so if you chose to make a, if you chose to replace a person, you may choose that their replacement does or does not have that category, until you make that decision in negotiation with Operation and the individual. For example, with the Superintendent and myself, senior management class, in both cases, at the end of our third year of our contract, you chose to allow that for each of us. So the same thing with special risk class.
So it, what it here, what it hears, what it sounds like to me is that it'll be all fine and good unless we decide for some reason that we don't want to do it anymore, and then we just need to make sure that it's removed. Right?
Yes.
Or that we want to negotiate it. The only other little bit of mud I want to throw in here is that sometimes, in a department, there may be folks that we feel are, that are eligible and that we want to do that for, and others, they may be part of that department, but their current duties don't really require that. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine with the consensus. I think it is important to try to be as transparent as we possibly can about our job descriptions and what they're eligible for. So it's as long as you have weighed in Attorney Powers that it's, you know, fine to do so, then we'll, we'll go with that and move on. Sound like a plan? Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Want to, Nisha, are you good? I mean, Ms. Moran?
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Moran, thank you for the clarification and giving us those.
Most definitely. Thank you.
I think the public need to know that while we're having this discussion. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, yes. And it does mean a lot to the Board, you know, to, to get things right and, and be clear about what we're trying to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Now we will move on to item 24.11. May I have a motion to approve the revised school start and stop times for the 2024-2025 school year? May I have a motion, please? Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member James. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, Ms. Dobins is going to present on this item, as we have a recommendation for a change for one of our schools for their start and stop times. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Thrower, Board Member Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Earlier this year, the Board approved the 2024-25 school start and end schedule. At that time of approval, we did not have requested information back from the Department of Education in regards to how the new state statute would impact our kindergarten through eighth grade Fort McCoy School. We have finally received that information from the state, which requires us to implement now the new statute of no earlier than an 8:00 AM start time in order to receive the grant funds of just under half a million dollars that are available to our district. After working with the principal, transportation and district leadership, the recommendation is to approve Fort McCoy School for an 8:00 AM start and a 2:35 dismissal. This allows a unified start and end time for the entire school. It is most beneficial specifically for elementary students to start as early as possible, and to staff whom commute many miles to and from the school. Also, because the school is in a rural area, the buses are not able to be three-tiered regardless of an 8:00 or 9:20 start time. Buses will still be able to pick up both elementary and middle school students at the same time, thus preventing double runs to the same locations, and then it allows them to have time to move on to an additional run afterwards. With that, that is our recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Dobins. Any discussion from the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Moving on to D. 24.12. May I have a motion to approve the standard agreement with Raptor Technologies LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member James, second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, do you have information to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this item is requested at the cost of $345,000 to provide campus security software. This helps us with our volunteer check-in system, and also for reunification practices should we need them. So please, to answer any questions you may have on, on this Raptor system.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the financial impact.
Oh, sorry, 345,000?
345?
345,000.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. A lot of these items are public awareness of what it takes to run a district. You know, these days, the requirements that we have had, especially since the Marjory Stone Douglas tragedy, I think it's important for the public to really know and understand, you know, what we're spending, why we're spending, and how we're spending. That's what I have to say about it. Any other discussion from Board members? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. We are moving on to our pulled item, which is C. 23.6. May I have a motion to approve the revised job description for Principal on Assignment, Assessment, Accountability and Research 1.581?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Vice Chair Conrad, you pulled this item to have further discussion?
I did, thank you. And just Chair Thrower, just a brief discussion. At our last work session, I pulled up and brought an item about communication and the importance of quick and responsive communication within the district and that expectation that we have for our teachers, our administrators, but also our district staff. And so when this job description came through and I was looking at the changes, I was just very pleased to see collaborative nature, ability to work with others in a collaborative format to achieve common goals, and to respond in a timely manner under stressful situations. And so I just wanted to thank the team for really, within a week and a half's time, working to improve the job description. So it really reflects what we want our staff, how we want our staff to respond within the district, because communication is key, and I find it continual to be a struggle, you know, within the district. Everybody's struggling to communicate. And so I like that there's a priority. That's the expectation is that we will respond quickly. We're going to collaborate and work together to get the job done. So again, thank you to the team for working on this. I'm just glad to see it in print. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. Is there any further discussion or comment from the board? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. Thank you all. We'll move on now to board committee reports and concerns. We'll start with a couple of meeting reminders. A special board meeting has been scheduled for May 30, 2024, at 7:30 a.m. The following administrative briefing and work session has been scheduled for May 30, 2024, at 9 a.m. We'll go ahead on now to committee reports, board member comments. Ms. Martinez, anything from your seat?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
Nothing from Legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Yes, briefly, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, just want to offer the deepest congratulations again to Jennifer Brown. We were able to celebrate her during Teacher Appreciation Week as a state finalist, which is just fantastic, really proud of her and and great representative of all of the very dedicated teachers we have in Marion County, incredibly proud of all of them. And so, again, grateful heart. Attended the the Hiring Fair for Instruction. We had a lot of schools out there, talked to all of them, and we were able to hire teachers on the spot, give them contracts on the spot. And I'm also been provided with an update from HR, Human Resources, that they're continuing to hire and secure employment with us. So really exciting to celebrate and welcome onsite at CF them to our team. That was an exciting, an exciting day. And of course, it was mentioned earlier, graduations begin next week. This is a terrific time of year and kicks off with Vanguard. So they start and they will continue for the next couple of weeks. So really proud of all of our seniors for all of their hard work and their accomplishments. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Looking this way, Board Member Campbell?
Sure, thank you. I'll be brief. Just as we're heading into these last eight days of school, just super grateful for all the work that the team is putting in and heading to baccalaureate services. I know Vice Chair Conrad and I attended Bellevue's already and the graduations that we're about to see, but students, there are still eight days left, and if you have missing assignments, perhaps you might still be able to get them in. But I've had the privilege and opportunity to actually shadow some of our employees recently and be in lots of different environments. And I think I've been in Forest High School four times in the last six days. So there's just, there's a lot going on in this district, and I just continue to be grateful with being Teacher Appreciation Week last week and being able to appreciate teachers and say thank you. We just have amazing things happening in this district, and I'm grateful for every person that is helping every student succeed.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings?
Good evening to everybody once again. I'll be brief as well, because you already talked about the graduation season that we're in. Hoping everyone will celebrate these graduates and just let them know that this is not the stopping point. This is the beginning of greater things to come for them, whether they whether they go to college, whether they get a job, whether they enter armed services. I officially, my son, my youngest son turned 18 on Sunday, Mother's Day. He is a senior. So I officially put him on notice on Sunday that he is under now the 1890 rule.
1890?
1890 rules, once you turn 18, you got 90 days to get a job, go to school, or go into the military. That's the 1890 rules.
That's not a choice.
So he is officially on the clock as of Sunday.
And publicly.
And publicly. This is twice. So, but we're encouraging, I said it with humor, but I'm serious about it to him. I encourage all our kids to make sure that they're doing something positive. Celebrate, have fun, enjoy your your graduation, do it, be responsible. And we want to see you walk across that stage. We want to shake your hands. We want to shout with you. We want to do all those things with you, but we want you to think about the next chapter as well. So many great things are happening around our district. Recently, board, I think back about two months ago, I'm shifting gears, about two months ago, we got a challenge from MESP. And I'm sure all of you have gotten the emails as well. I've accepted the challenge, and so we'll be walking in the shoes. They asked us to walk in their shoes for some hours. Mike can't do the whole day, but I definitely can walk in there for a couple of hours. And we appreciate the MESP rep for coming and asking that. We value them, and we say we value them, so we should show them that we value them and not just pacify or accommodate this. We should seriously go into that with an open mind and understand what they're going through. It's the reasoning behind the ask, I understand that, but I think as board members, we have that right, that duty to go forward and see what's going on with them. Last week, again, it was good to be at Forest this week with Ms. Brown to celebrate her and then to last, oh, it was last Friday? That was last Friday, for them to get Apple the Golden, the Golden Stallion.
Apple.
Apple the Golden Stallion.
Black stallion and apple. Let's keep our horses straight.
Good thing, good thing, good thing, and we congratulate her, but also congratulate Forest High School, my alma mater, on having so many golden apple teachers. That was truly something, truly something great. I left there that morning and had the opportunity to go over to Vanguard High School and present a kid with a scholarship from our fraternity. This is, it's so good, it's so wonderful when you get to present these young people with scholarships. Every dollar counts. Every dollar counts. Every dollar counts. Some kids won't get the $50,000 scholarships, but when you send your kid off to school, every dollar counts, and I was grateful to be able to present that. But then I left from Vanguard and went over to Fordham to help them celebrate their teacher's appreciation. And I do want to thank Ms. Beck and her staff, and I want to thank my fraternity, because we were able to give every teacher at at Fordham a $25 check, just to let them know that we appreciate what they do. It won't buy, it won't buy a state dinner at Outback, but it'll buy them a small round box of ice cream. We appreciate everything that they did. That's my comments.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Board Member James?
Good evening. I am going to pass some paperwork down to you all to have, and it will be attached to the record for tonight's meeting. I wanted to begin my comments first by acknowledging all of the wonderful recognitions we had this evening. The individuals we recognize tonight are just a reflection of the hard work and dedication we see throughout our sites, schools, and otherwise. We have eight more school days, as Dr. Campbell mentioned, remaining, and I'm proud of the work our schools are putting into each and every day to help every student succeed. I want to ask this community to lift our North End up in prayer. We have had many different struggles over the last month and just today have experienced two, two major incidences within our community, and I just ask the praying people to pray, because we we need a lot of positive prayer for the individuals who are struggling today on the North End. I had the pleasure of sitting with an MESP employee at a middle school, as well as some of the staff from our school community, our school information and state reporting department this week. They were able to share with me their unique ways of work and growth areas as we enter into the next school year. I appreciate the opportunity to learn more about what they do every day. As a board member, I will remain committed to supporting every employee regardless of their type of work, to ensure that they are met with grace, kindness, and support daily. I want to preface the remainder of my comments with this. As a board member, we collectively have very little opportunity to communicate with each other about board business, as those opportunities are only during public meetings. I have had some experiences over the past few weeks that have left me very frustrated, disappointed, and isolated. During the remainder of my comments tonight, I ask that you please hear me out and allow for questions to be asked on topics we all need the answer to, so that we can do the best job for our community. I was made aware last Wednesday, 5:8, that a letter had been drafted and delivered to Chair Thrower on Tuesday, 5:7. While my name was not mentioned, the letter was about me. This is the first opportunity I have had to correct the record in that letter. Dispersed to all board members tonight, as well as provided to the clerk to be attached in board member comments, is my record and account of a series of events I've experienced over the last few weeks, as well as a copy of the letter that was drafted to Chair Thrower. It is important for all board members to have the full account of events and an understanding of the unique lived experiences I have had, being the board member who has sat on the selection committee for the facilities department. I feel strongly that there is internal operations dysfunction at an immeasurable amount and have grave concern for the decisions being made by our facilities department and superintendent. In addition, beginning last week, Wednesday, I asked where, when the superintendent's evaluation was due and when we would be completing it. I spoke with Attorney Powers about this, and he indicated that it was an item for the HR department to handle, but would connect with them. As of Friday afternoon, he had not been successful with connecting with our HR executive director. When I spoke with our HR executive director on Monday morning, she indicated that my conversation was her, with her, was the first she was hearing about the superintendent's evaluation tool. I'm aware that she spent some time trying to locate the tool. Since Friday, I have been made aware that the tool was found. Just this afternoon, it was dispersed to board members. As a board, it is our obligation to meet the requirements of the superintendent's contract, which outlines a due date for the completion of her evaluation tool by June 1. This afternoon, I was made aware that her evaluation will be placed on the May 28 board meeting for a board vote to meet the deadline of June 1. In the work session on May 2, I led a conversation in my board comments that concluded with all board members in agreement that and coming to consensus that we wanted to see how much it would cost, if and how we could find the money, and a timeline of execution for adding a wing to both Elementary X and W that are currently under construction. On the morning of Friday, May 10, I received this communication from the contractor for Elementary X. Good morning. Per our ongoing conversation about the potential wing addition at Elementary X, we are at the final hour of our ability to add more grease traps for expanded meals in a cost-effective and least disruptive way. I haven't heard anything from facilities. Am I okay to broach the subject with them? I encourage the contractor to work directly with facilities on this item. Dr. Gullett, can you please provide us an update on this matter?
Okay, may I respond? Okay, I need to, Madam Chair, members of the board, there are a couple of things I want to share pertaining to the matter that's been reviewed. As a superintendent at Marion County Public Schools, it is my duty and responsibility to ensure a fair, equitable, legal, and ethical process for all business conducted by the district. I determined there was a lack of integrity in the process for New High School CCC due to concerns that have been brought to my attention, both by this board member and others. I rejected all bills and I moved from the internal investigation to outside legal counsel. I am also in the process of obtaining an outside consultant to review our construction process in its entirety, including comparison with both local and state standards of practice. My intention is that these reviews are expedient yet thorough, so we can move forward with this project and all future ones to support our students that need this. When these reviews are complete, I will provide an update to the entire board with a course of action. As this is under legal review, however, it would be inappropriate to comment on any specific items, particularly because they include personnel matters. As with regard to the wing additions that is under review, I have spoken with Ms. Dobbins. I know she's working with her team to assess the cost of what that can be. We can certainly provide an update. Ms. Dobbins, you want to provide an update now? She could provide an update now, specifically with regard to the wing additions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Dobbins?
Thank you. So I did reply to the construct, the construction manager of that company that we would set up that meeting. Meanwhile, in the background, I did have our team reach out to the design team, the architect, and discovered, also in working with Joe London, our civil engineer, that we have enough grease traps at the current site for both schools, even if we add the addition. I asked our team to put that on the agenda for our upcoming meeting with both construction companies. As far as an estimate for a wing, we are still finalizing that. We have an upcoming meeting with the architect, because that school is a very unique, laid-out school. We need to make sure we have the right number of classrooms, so we can estimate the number of students and the estimated cost. If you're asking me today to give you a ballpark, that ballpark would be around $10 million for additional wing, but you cannot hold me to it, because we haven't finished the work to come up with that number.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dobbins.
I'm almost done.
Sure.
Finally, in the letter drafted by the superintendent to Chair Thrower, she indicated outside counsel was being hired. Dr. Gullett, can you please share with the board how much this will cost and what budget it will be coming out of, and also what outside counsel will be looking into?
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Blackman, Staff Attorney, is working with Attorney Powers. I do not have a cost, but they are working together on what that looks like.
I, I, other than knowing that Ms. Marchman's office was being retained, I'm not working any further at this point with Mr. Blackman on this, so.
We'll provide a cost when Attorney Blackman has that.
In closing, fellow board members, I ask you review my timeline that has been dispersed to you. I have significant concerns about the internal operations of our district and multiple departments, and I'm very worried about how we will navigate these bumpy waters ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member James. Vice Chair Conrad?
Thank you, Chair Thrower. Real quick, I have several things to go over, but with going along with what Dr. James shared, I, a couple of those things were on my list as well, so I just want to share. I would like to improve the communication on what's going on with the construction and with the legal counsel. So some sort of timeline where we either get a weekly update, so we know. The tricky part is, is the community, the community is watching what we're doing. We're getting ready to ask for a half-cent sales tax. So all eyes are on what we're doing, and I think it makes us look ineffective when I can't answer questions and community members know more than board members know. And so my ask, especially on attaining counsel, like, what does that look like? When you hire outside counsel, do they give you an estimate about how many hours they think it will take to come to resolution? Do we, will they give us any sort of timeline? How long are we looking at holding up the project? Those are questions that I have and really haven't been asked. And so I just want to know what this looks like going further and how we can be, as a board, more informed, because as it was shared, we can't communicate with each other. So as Chair Thrower may know some things, the rest of us do not.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad. We will provide you an update. We'll provide a weekly update to the board. Make sure that we provide, as soon as I have it, from Attorney Blackman. I know he's working with Ms. Moran, because she started the investigation, and since that's moved to outside counsel, due to the nature of those who are involved in this process, that's why it was important to move to outside counsel. We've had different people involved, both within the committee and outside entities involved, and there have been allegations that must be thoroughly reviewed. And so as soon as I have some numbers and some guidance in terms of what that looks like, they are securing the outside counsel, and we will provide that weekly update to the board. Happy to do so.
And I feel like you need to be a little more specific. So I would like an update on the process and the cost, but also how are we moving forward with the contracts? And I also would like to know if the board is going to have input on what this particular board, I shared with the superintendent, I haven't said it publicly, but I think each board member feels differently and feels that different things are important in acquiring a contract. And so that may change over the years, but right now, I think it's important that what this board considers important in hiring a company is considered. And so I just want to know if if we're going to have input? Is that going to be looked at? And will we be reached out? Is that going to be looked at and will we be reached out to individually? Um, just what does that piece look like?
Certainly. And I'll reiterate, one of the statements I made was, when the reviews are complete, I'll provide an update with a course of action. It is my intention to bring that to the whole board. I think that, I think that at this point, because we're doing, and I've asked for a comprehensive review, not just of the legalities of those items that have come forward, um, but also the personnel, but also the whole process. Um, and I also mentioned earlier about the local and state piece. Understand that the importance of both pieces, not just at the state level, but locally. What does that look like? How does that compare to our other local municipalities as they do the business and consider, um, companies in this process? It is, I, I don't believe that this hasn't been done thoroughly in the past. What I have learned in this process is that there has not been a thorough review, in recent years anyway, of this whole process, start to finish. I am aware that we had two recent elementary schools that went through the same process, and I don't recall there being any concerns raised there. Didn't come to my attention, I think even publicly. Comments were made that praised that process from those who were involved, and now there's a difference. And why there's a difference, I don't know. I'm, I'm learning bits and pieces. I'm not an expert, but certainly going to seek not only the, a legal counsel to examine this deeply, because there's a lot of money at stake, and there's a lot at stake. I am, I am a superintendent, I'm also a citizen of this community, and I am committed to making sure that we do this the right way. We do this the public way, as we do everything else, and we do this the right way. Concerns that have been brought to my attention have expanded, and since I don't think it's sufficient to just deal with that internally, I think it needs to go externally, and we need experts in the field of facilities and construction process and building to examine that. What does this look like state level, but what does this look like at the local level? And then, how is this done at the local level? What are our options? I fully intend, my plan is to bring that to the board. And, and I want this done as quickly as possible.
I appreciate that.
Without rushing. So there's a balance of expediency. We need to get this right. There's concerns that have been brought up, they need to fully be addressed, and my intention is to bring that to the board as quickly as we have that done.
Thank you for that. And, and I feel that we do have room for improvement as, and speaking with our city and county officials, they have faced a similar problem recently, and they too have had to redo some of their processes to move forward. And so, this problem is not unique just to the school board and the construction that's going on here, and just this single board member, um, I know a couple of construction projects have been approved, but I was never part of the scoring process. I didn't ever see it in any, I was, that did not move forward in the final portion of the scoring. And so, that is what I want to be known as we move forward in this process, that that is part of our option when we look at choices for going through the process and scoring. Thank you for letting me share my concerns. I'm going to relay into, um, it's not a smooth transition, but I'm going to move on to a couple of other things. It is graduation season, several board members have shared that, um, baccalaureate ceremonies have begun, and graduation is in sight. Just to be careful, students and staff members, please be careful, um, as you are celebrating and, um, enjoying crossing the finish line. So, be careful out there. Uh, I want to say, this last week has been, um, a great support from the community, uh, between celebrations for teachers and staff members, just so many businesses and nonprofit groups getting together to support our schools for teacher appreciation, and I just want to share my thanks to, at each different school I visited, there were so many wonderful things going on, and so I hope our staff members feel the love, because we certainly do appreciate all they do each and every day. Congratulations to Ms. Brown. It was fun to have Apple transfer to the Forest Campus, even though the weather tried to, um, stall our festivities. We did have a, um, great time celebrating her success and all that she represents for Marion County Schools. So, congratulations, Ms. Brown. Um, I did also want to give a shout out to all of our schools and staff. All year long, they've been working to increase their attendance, uh, you know, just every single day, and looking at the attendance reports coming in for the last couple of weeks, with all of the testing that's going on, it really has been fabulous. And so, just a shout out and a thank you for all the work you're doing to get your students to school. Um, I was at Ward Highlands this afternoon, and they only had seven makeups to do. I was like, how's that's really great? So I was super excited. Um, just thank you again, because those numbers, you know, show up on our spreadsheet, but I know there's so much work and effort and a communication, um, that's going along with our, from our staff to our families, and so, thank you for that, that big push. Uh, I know it was a huge undertaking. I don't know. I did, um, as we close out this year, we're winding down with eight more days of school. Earlier in the year, we had some discussion about backpacks, and we had some parents that brought forward some concerns for backpacks. I don't remember if we had any further conversation on students being able to carry backpacks, or was that ever, did we ever address that any further? I just wanted to know if it was an option, is it something we're looking for, for next year? For some of our middle schoolers and high schoolers, we had parents saying they were carrying 22 pounds of books, and I was just going through my notes and noticed I didn't remember that we had talked about it any further. For lockers, I'm sorry, I said backpacks, but it's lockers. I used, I used the wrong term.
Okay.
Because most of our schools have lockers, but we've moved away from using them, I'm guessing for safety, and I just didn't know if we've had any further discussion on that or any other recommendations.
Um, Vice Chair Conrad, is the question about whether we've looked at addressing how we can help the students with those heavy backpacks? The answer is yes. We talked previously, don't recall off the top of my head what date it was, I remember bringing back and having that conversation here, I know Dr. Campbell brought that up before. Um, and we had a conversation at a principal's meeting, dedicated time, talking with each school leader to get their feedback and brainstorm, um, what this looks like on each campus, and after much discussion with them and those roundtables, they, they all felt like we deal with this on a case-by-case basis, because some students have extra equipment, you know, musical instruments, equipment for after-school activities, and they didn't have any recommendation as principals representing their schools to bring forward for any change district-wide. They felt like it was best dealt with case-to-case, and they gave very specific examples of how effective that can be. So, we landed on if, if students have really heavy backpacks, work with their teacher, work with their school teams to try to, you know, for example, that sometimes they'll leave it in, in a certain class, and then they'll come back later at the end of the day and get it, and they've been very successful in trying to accommodate that. I'm not saying that they don't have, some still don't have really heavy backpacks, but I heard a lot of success stories of how they've been able to problem-solve at the school level. That's, that was the last update on that.
Glad to see that they're making that decision on the school-based level. That's great. Um, I think that's all I have, uh, for tonight. Thank you again to all of our teams. It was great to see all of our teachers with so many years of service, really enjoyed Hillcrest coming in and sharing and leading the pledge for us. And so, as we're winding down, I'm just grateful for all the work, all the people that are here this evening, uh, working behind the scenes and, and helping every student succeed. You are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad, and, yes, it's been another really, uh, fun and, and rewarding night of, of recognitions and, and acknowledgements. I continue to be amazed at the spectrum of, of different jobs and, and in different job categories across this district. It just goes to show you how much opportunity we really do have when we're honoring people anywhere from locksmiths to, you know, especially these paraprofessionals for so many years of, of contribution that some people might never have even thought of, um, what it takes to run our school system. Um, I'm going to be very brief as far as the inquiry is concerned about, um, facilities and construction management. Uh, I, I do welcome it. Um, these concerns predate this superintendent, these concerns predate this board. Um, y- years ago, there were some audit findings, uh, that required some changes. This was a long time ago now, so I think that, just like the salary study, uh, there are some things that this district has needed, you know, for a long time, um, to finally get things on, completely on the track that we're trying to, to go on with all the great things we have happening. So I will welcome that. Um, thank you, Dr. Gullett, for saying that you want it to be thorough but also expedient. We have 3,500 students at least and their families that are affected by, um, this, and, you know, our, our mission is helping every student succeed, and keeping our eye on that ball continues to be my priority. Um, as far as the superintendent's evaluation is concerned, I had figured out that, just as today, um, students are still testing. We are waiting on cut scores. Um, the impactful data that comes from fast testing, and I'm really glad that it's called fast now, because I'm hearing at the schools that getting that, it's much faster turnaround time is actually getting the students more engaged, you know, in the process. But there's rulemaking that has to take place, and as part, as part of the evaluation being goal one, looking at improvements in, in proficiency and learning gains without that information, uh, I'm not that comfortable evaluating that section. So that led me to look at board policy, which is, board policy, I think you emailed it earlier this afternoon, 10:40, and there's some discrepancy there. Our board policy says July 1, having the board, uh, the superintendent's evaluation completed, and that's probably because of fiscal year, I think that's how most of them do it. Think the board, for a variety of reasons, landed on June 1st, um, because we are all about providing stability, um, we're all about making sure that if there's a parting of company, that we have time to adjust, that superintendent would have time to, you know, find a, whatever they're going to do. Um, a few things have changed since that conversation. It's certainly a, a seller's market when it comes to superintendents these days. We all know the challenges of public education, it's not the easiest role to fill. Um, I also realize that as I observe other districts, that, um, if a superintendent leaves, what they usually do is immediately appoint an interim so that they don't have to rush, you know, to find the next one. So, uh, with the superintendent's, um, consent, I would like to also get some more information, because I am looking at June 25th board meeting at the very latest, uh, also the ability of a special board meeting if needed on June 26th or 27th. By that time, I would hope and pray that the fast testing scores will be in. I don't know that we would have district grade at that point, but we would certainly have documented school grades. I know that we have folks in this district and across all of our schools that are wizards that are busy predicting all through the year where their schools are going to land, but those aren't the legal findings, you know? Um, so, those are some of the things that are on my mind, um, and I would like to get your input, Dr. Gullett, on what you think we really can expect in terms of that impactful data coming in, and also whether or not you would entertain the thought of not breaching your contract if we delay, um, that June 1st, when I reviewed it, as long as we have it by October, which no one wants, obviously. Um, it doesn't create any impact on the board. Um, so that, so that's, that's what's coming out of my head.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. So, the, we've been updating, um, the board this week, obviously, on the, the data thus far. Um, we had tested again today. Testing should come, conclude at the end of the week. Um, and again, the data we've been sharing is, is, as we call it, it's unscrubbed, and that's just our, our internal term for they're not matched students, and so those are, there's a process involved in that. Obviously, it's a lot faster than it used to be, so in the next couple of weeks, we should, yes, thankfully. Uh, I know our schools are grateful too, um, that we should have that finalized in the next couple of weeks. If you're asking about the data points themselves, there was a rulemaking, uh, session today that, um, I know the team attended. We have to debrief on what that looks like, but, but getting information on the, on the, from the, on the state on when we'll get grades, we don't know yet. I don't, it's not usually right away, but certainly the data will have, and then it'll get, um, match data, the survey 2-3 matches, and then that will be a better indicator, not only of just the proficiency, but also of the learning gains. That should be concluded in the next couple of weeks, if that's your question.
Okay, thank you. And also, um, I, I don't know that you can give an estimate, because it's hot off the press, but the results of, of the, this inquiry is also important, um, in what we're doing, where we're going, where we're trying to go, you know, evaluating that. Um, so I want to make sure as a board member personally, that I have all of the information I need to make the best evaluation possible. So, it, like I said, it may not be, there may not be a timeline you can share for completion, but, but maybe the question I will ask more specifically is getting a placeholder, because there's things that are going to have to occur prior to that, which is the individual board briefings. You guys need a chance to do your, um, to do your evaluations. So, as, as a placeholder, um, the other, we have June 25th, and then the meeting prior to that would be-
Chair Thrower.
Just one moment, please. Um, it would be June 11th. Um, that may be, you know, ambitious. It, it bothers me that we're, we continue to be at the mercy of, of the state as to when they roll out these hard scores, um, but they're committed to doing it faster and, you know, I want to be ready.
Yes, Board Member James?
Can Attorney Powers weigh in on what the contract that we have signed with the superintendent says and what violating that contract will, will lead to, please?
Uh, the superintendent's contract has a date of June 1st as the operative date for evaluation. Board policy is a July 1st date. So, the superintendent's contract, though, uh, indicates that only in the third year, um, the, the final year of the contract, October becomes relevant, because there will be an automatic replacement contract that goes into place. So, the only way that we could do a June, anything after June 1st and not be in violation of her contract would be with her consent. So, there would have to be, you know, her express consent to allow that.
Also, wouldn't the board have to agree to do that?
Yes. Both parties would have to agree.
And then, um, the piece about the board policy as well, um, that's something that was, you know, has been identified that we need to be thinking about. I know we're going to be reviewing our policies once the governor has signed everything and, you know, we know how to proceed, but I guess then the, the first question would be to Dr. Gullett, you know, are, are you willing? And then we need to reach consensus on the board, um, to do that for a fair and good cause.
Willing to do it in, in June instead of May? Before July 1 instead of June 1? Is that the question?
Before July 1 instead of before, by June 1, yes.
Yes, if, if you want all the information finalized, yes, I would agree to that.
Okay. Attorney Powers, what's next? We just asked for consensus from the board?
We need to have consensus of the board or a motion and board vote if consensus is not had.
But we can't do a motion and a vote in a meeting?
It's not on the agenda.
Um, I don't think we have historical precedent for having done it, but I believe you can.
You told me in the last meeting we could not do it.
Well, it's during board comments, so the, the meeting portion of the meeting is really over. So, during, during a, during the business portion of the meeting, this is board comments now, um, I would say, first, let's seek consensus. If there is not consensus, then the board would have to vote on the item in order to, to, well, we have the superintendent's agreement, and the board would have to vote on the item. So if there's not consensus, consensus means everybody agrees. Not everybody, or everybody says, I'm not going to, um, it's, it's not the equivalent to be unanimous vote. Consensus has a distinct meaning, and consensus means, yeah, that wouldn't be my preference, maybe one person says it wouldn't be my preference, but I, I will live with that, but if one person, even one person on a board does not agree, it's not a consensus of the board. Consent, otherwise it's simply a vote. Three to two is not consensus.
But we can't do a vote because the, the board, when's our next?
We would have to reopen the business portion of the meeting. It's not agendized, so it'd essentially be like a walk-on item. I'm not a fan of walk-on items. The city and county do them, uh, or at least I can speak for the city on a regular basis, um, but we don't have historical precedent for that, and I'm reluctant to start that.
Well, I'm not in consensus.
Okay, well then that takes care of that, so- So I would like to hear from the other board members, what their thoughts are on this. I remain committed to having what we need to make the best decisions possible, and I don't think we have that data available. I don't think we have what we need to really -- I'm worried about the validity of the actual tool itself. Were we even to ignore the superintendent's consent for us to delay to jump into this potential really hot water? I don't think that's very much protecting the district, but those are just my thoughts. Okay. Board Member Campbell?
Chair, thank you. As, serving as chair when this tool was developed, let's start back there. The Goal One student success, I'm looking directly at the tool itself. Certainly, it is to increase student achievement opportunities, access, and equity. The performance indicators do not give stipulations to how much we want the district to grow in any particular area. While we aligned it directly to the strategic plan, if you read the performance indicators in student success, they are not tied to a metric that says a certain percentage of learning gains, a certain percentage of student achievement, anything like that. It's strengthening core instruction, developing systems, demonstrating engagement, working to expand access, and working to enhance student readiness. Now, if this board wants to change the evaluation tool to be linked specifically to those data sets that we are awaiting, that's a different conversation. But the actual tool itself that we created, this board member's opinion is that it doesn't, we don't have to delay because we don't have to wait on the data set. While that's great information and that's helpful and what, certainly, we want the improvement in the district, and actually, that's an indicator of the strategic plan moving forward. Absolutely, we want to see that student achievement in those successes. The tool we created isn't tied to those metrics.
Actually, I have to say, when you're reading priority strategies, I'm reading outcome metrics. Increase the percent of students making at least one year of growth, learning gains in ELA district-wide, you know, to 63% by 2026. Students made at least one year of growth in math, percentage of students one-year proficiency, you know, advanced coursework, which we probably would have that, you know, data now or close to it. You know, that is the most defined, the most, that's what people, that's what they want to know. Is it an A school? Is it a B school? You know?
I'm sorry.
Yep, district grade. I don't know, you know, when the actual district grade would come out. So that's where I was going with it. I was actually looking at the outcome metrics because you're right, the priority strategies are more general.
And Chair, I'm sorry, if I may yet again. So you're looking directly at the strategic plan itself?
Yes.
And I'm looking directly at the superintendent's evaluation tool that this board created last year.
Right.
So if we want to adapt and recreate the evaluation tool, then that will certainly require additional work sessions. And if we want to do that and align it even more closely to the strategic plan, then that's something that we can do. But the evaluation tool we used last year and created last year that we were all emailed today does not require us to have those specific metrics in this evaluation tool. So I understand your concern, and honestly, it's a strategic plan update, and a strategic plan, we tied this to the strategic plan, but we also didn't tie it so tightly to say if we don't have 1% growth in this or a 5% growth in that, then you get X, Y, Z. So again, looking at the actual evaluation tool, it doesn't say what the strategic plan says.
And while it may not be required, it is thinking in terms of how would you want to be evaluated? What data would you want to have available for consideration? And why would we put the cart before the horse when we have consent from the superintendent and also board policy that says July 1?
Because our contract, the legal contract, says June 1. The contract we voted on all as a board last year, the contract we had robust conversation about. So now, in the 11th hour, this is very much flashback of what we experienced, Ms. Conrad and I specifically, when we got on the board in the 11th hour, asking to take on a task and then exceed a contractual timeline. I'm not willing to do that. If we want to make adjustments in the future, then we can make adjustments in the future. And I think that we need to determine who will own this timeline going forward so that all board members are afforded proper time to accomplish this task. There are seven days until technically this item needs to be uploaded to the agenda for publishing. If we collectively want to put placeholders in and get it submitted at a time after that, that's a decision I think the board needs to come to consensus on tonight about what our expectation for each other is. But it is absolutely a short timeline. But this is the reality of where we are, and I'm not comfortable at all with violating the expectations that we set collectively as a board when we renewed her contract. So.
I think that was before anyone, and I hear you, I do. It wouldn't be my preference, but this is where we are. And we sit up here twice, four times a month and say, confront reality, you know? This is the reality of where we are, and there are options available to make it as appropriate and as, trying to even think of the right term, as professional. And, you know, someone might say, well, you know, violating a contract, well, it's not violating a contract if you have consensus and you also have conflicting board policy. And instead of being married to a date, I'd rather be married to a better process. So I 100% agree that as we continue with an appointed superintendent, that we continue to refine the timeline, specify very much who owns it, specify when the reminders begin to go out of when this needs to be done and the journey we need to start on to get it done as we all want to, with fidelity and with all of our bases covered. Haven't heard from Cummings yet, or Conrad, really.
I can go. As I, and Dr. Campbell, thank you for bringing up that we received this today so I could access it. So thank you for sharing that. As I look over the performance indicators, I think that we can move ahead. I, too, am not happy about the tight timeline that we are presented. It is going to be difficult, but all of our staff have timelines that they have to meet all the time, and so I feel that we should move forward, working to meet this timeline as it is scheduled.
Okay. Board Member Cummings?
We just got this today. I need to look at this more.
The same tool we --
I understand it's the same tool, but I still need to look at this more, so I'm not prepared to make a comment one way or the other on this.
Well, I feel like what I'm hearing is that we needed full consensus of five board members to delay the superintendent's evaluation, knowing that board policy is different than the contact that we have. I guess on the legal side of it, I will ask you what trumps what, but you've already shared that unless there's consensus, then we really can't move forward, and we do need to stick to the terms of the contract even though our board policy says otherwise.
We must stick to board policy, certainly, absolutely. Now, as far as a contract goes, if we know, and I'm just, look, speaking bluntly here, if we know that there is consent of the party who would potentially be harmed by a breach of the contract, then proceeding forward is something that could happen, but without there being any consequence. However, there's no problem with violation of the contract. That's not the point. The point is, is the board able to say that's what we're going to do? Well, the board can proceed as though it's going to go for the process on June 28, and then the very next time the board meets on June 21, that could be a voting item during a regular meeting and decide then to move it to July 1 if the board chose to do that. Or the board may choose at that meeting, or if it's brought up for a vote at a later time, the board may choose to maintain it as, I'm sorry, May 28, was that the meeting date? Sorry, I just said June 28.
I think we're with you, though.
So prior to a June 1. So the board could certainly do that. So this isn't the only opportunity we ever have to potentially vote on that item. So this is a procedural question now, and it gets into Robert's Rules of Orders and what consensus means. And as I've said on this platform before many times when we had debates over consensus, consensus really means everybody's at least conceding to it or agreeing to it. So if we don't have that, then it requires a board vote to move forward. However, I will also say that if, I would like the board, if we're going to do it that way, or either way, to make a determination that the board believes it has adequate resources with the evaluations that are, with evaluative tools or instruments that are already being used or that are already available to us to make that assessment. If the board feels that it does have the tools that it needs outside of those fast results, which are going to be provided at some indeterminate date, hopefully quite soon, then that would, of course, increase the comfort level for moving in that direction. I will place a warning before the board, and that warning is that if the board were to move forward and determines also that they are going to make an evaluation or assessment and does not have enough data to make an assessment on an item that is there within the script, that would not bode well for the board to defend itself in any potential litigation or hearing later. So, and that's as to any employee. So in a DOE hearing, I would not want to be defending, if it ever got to that point with any employee, I would not want to be defending that, well, I didn't really have much to rate them on, so I just gave them a perfect score, a lowest score possible, whatever. You know, that's not really, that's not smart for the board. So taking all that together, the board can make its decisions. The board knows what all of the factors are here, and, yeah, I'll be available for questions if you need me.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. You know, it would have been one thing if it was the year that school grades weren't going to be released, you know, where we had that COVID year. So they weren't going to be available for consideration, so we couldn't consider them. But that's not the situation that we're in. Board Member James?
Dr. Gullit or Mr. Whitehouse, could you guys share what percentage of our students have been assessed today? I know that there's daily updates or at least bi-weekly updates going out with testing. Is it possible to share how many, what percentage of our students have been assessed?
Yeah, I think Mr. Whitehouse could answer that because it's changing all the time.
Sure, good evening. So with our English Language Arts Assessment, which we began first, we're at about 96% complete tested for the district. So that's all students across all schools for district. Math, when we looked at it today, we're about 95% for all of our math assessments. Science, we just started this week, and social studies, we just started this week.
Okay, thank you. And to be clear, I believe I understand 95% is a threshold we must reach.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought to understand. Now, understanding that we have not matched all of the kids and we don't have the perfect data, but we also don't know when we're going to get school grades. When did school grades come this last year, for this school year currently?
So the 22, 23 school grades did not get released until winter break, and that was a different year because we had to do
Sure.
Core setting.
Respectfully, though, respectfully, though, every year seems to be a new year with the DOE. Every year, they come up with a new way they want to find the cut scores, and a new way they want to scale the bell curve, and a new way they want to establish how school grade is going to be calculated. So we can run all of our internal numbers, but we won't have the official number until the state decides to give us the official number, which could be July, or it could be December, and anywhere in between. So respectfully, we have a whole lot of data. By the end of this week, all testing will be concluded, and it is safe to say that 95% of our students or greater will have been assessed throughout Marion County Public Schools in all subjects. We will also know how many students, plus or minus of very few, are walking across our stages to receive diplomas and our graduation rates. All of that data will be available. Is that correct?
So technically, the window runs through May 31 for all of our state testing, which is beyond our school year. So in theory, we could still test students if we needed to. I would say we're definitely there with ELA math. It'll be harder to say science, social studies, just because this is our first week. We also had schools that delayed testing today because of the tornado threat that we're going to test today and have postponed that. So it's possible we would not be at 95% in science, social studies by the end of this week, but I wouldn't know until Friday.
Right, but that is information that could be provided to the board. The up-to-date information as of Friday afternoon for all of the data collected could be provided to the board by the end of the day on Friday for all of the metrics for all state testing.
Yes, good.
And to Dr. Campbell's point, while the strategic plan frames the evaluation tool, the evaluation tool does not speak about metrics. So thank you for sharing those facts on the spot. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member James. And respectfully, I would say that we all know in the community that superintendent's careers rise and fall on school grade. You know, that is the thing that the board members talk the most about, you know, what was the school grade and what were the schools' grades? So, yes, it is beyond frustrating that we never know from year to year when those actual scores are going to be released. The rest of it is well-educated guesses. And I'm just raising the point that doing an evaluation based on well-educated guesses when the data, I was trying to get an answer of when more hard data would be available, like cut scores, that's pretty valid.
We don't know that. And when we did the evaluation last year, we didn't know that. By the way, when we completed the evaluation last year, we didn't have school grade done.
And we knew that they were going to be very, very delayed, and that was conveyed.
But we didn't have the information.
Right, but I thought we were talking about improving our practices. You know, we can just go around and around. Clearly, we're on different sides of this issue. I want to stay within the realm of protecting the district, and, you know, if it is the boards, because we don't have consensus, our other option, what I'm hearing is, but it is not advised, to do a walk-on as a vote and have a vote on it, so then at least it's official, what we're deciding to do. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Chair. So again, I'm looking at the superintendent's evaluation tool. So regardless of whether we start it this week and have to have it turned in by Tuesday or what have you, the data sets we continue to talk about are only in Goal One.
Right, which is said from the beginning.
I understand. I'm sorry, Chair.
Sorry.
Goal Two talks all about safe and positive learning and working environment, and there potentially are data sets from survey data that we may want to ensure we at least have at the top of our inboxes or what have you about engaging families and that. We have some of that, but we may not have it at the top and may need to go hunting for some of this. Talent management, Goal Three, that whole performance indicator is all based on recruitment and hiring teachers, administrators, staff. We may not have that data quickly at our fingertips. So I only say all of this, regardless of when this board needs to do this evaluation, I would request, if I am able to do so, that the superintendent potentially work with her team to send all five of us the data that we already have in each of these other key indicator areas because there would be, I'm looking at Goal Four now, 4.1, the superintendent enhances the use of technology for improved efficiency district-wide. I'm certainly, there's, I'm certain there's something that Mr. Bimbinudi could say right away, yes, this is how we have that, or on such and such date, this was approved. There are, to Attorney Powers' point, there are potentially some data points apart from school grade data that are throughout this evaluation tool that we probably aren't going to have at the top of our inbox. So regardless of the timeline, I just want to ensure that we also have that conversation that I, as an individual board member, would like to have those pieces sent back to us. that I, as an individual board member, would like to have those pieces sent back to us, or highlighted, you can find it on this date, or whatever, because, again, student success is one piece to the superintendent's job, and according to our strategic plan, it's one piece. And there are five other areas that this evaluation is framed on, and I want to make sure that we do all have the information at the top of mind. So, that's to Attorney Powers' point, that if we're just giving scores based on what our thoughts are versus what actual data is. I think the data exists, but it just may not be readily available to us as quickly as we might need it as we're evaluating. I don't think that that means that we have to delay. I do think those, that can all come to us in a matter of a couple of days. But if I recall last year's timeline, we did start this process in April, I actually looked at it just today. We started this process in April, we did have time to score and meet individually with the superintendent about what our scores said ahead of submitting them, or even at the same time as submission, maybe that all goes hand in hand, that we talk through them at the same time that they've already been uploaded. We did start this process earlier last year, so that's all I had.
Thank you Board Member Campbell, and sorry for letting my passion get ahead of me. There's artifacts that Dr. Gullett needs to be able to supply to us too about accomplishments and, and things that are relevant to this. I agree that there's a lot of elements that we need to have available to us to be able to consider it to be a really comprehensive and, and valid evaluation, which is what our goal is, and what it was to have this robust evaluation tool.
So, where does that leave us?
Where it leaves us is, based on your advice, since we weren't able to reach consensus, I guess I need some reassurance that the elements of this, if we, if we're going to try to stick to before June 1, even with the superintendent's willingness to extend and board policy covering us safely for that, then...
Chair, I can, I can go with a June 25th date, just based on the information that I just shared, because there are multiple elements throughout that. Granted, student success, I do not believe that I need to score Goal 1 to wait on school grades. I don't believe that because of the way Goal 1 is written, and the performance indicators directed in, in Goal 1. But honestly, to be able to say retaining teachers and retaining hires, we might want that data. We might want to know what our May 31st end-of-school year looks like of students that, or, excuse me, teachers and other employees that we weren't able to retain, or what have you. Obviously, they're hiring and they're recruiting right now, but I mean, there are elements to this, efficiently recruits, hires, assigns, and retains. We, we don't have that data, and that's something that we could, there, there are elements to this that we could go ahead and score right now, and there are elements to this that perhaps we would like to have additional artifacts. I can move forward with a June 25th date if, if we have consensus on that. I don't like breaking anything that is a legal document that says June 1, but perhaps we need to make an amendment to that document. I, I don't remember why we came to June 1, we had extensive conversation about it, but as we're having deliberation right now, we don't need to have this every year, guys. I mean, I went through a lot last year, serving as your chair, when we did this in a very, very detailed timeline to ensure that, I believe it is the chair's responsibility, but who reminds the chair? I don't know. Like, so, it was, it definitely was something that fell on me last year, and we did it. And so, I, that, that's all I'm going to say about it. I, I can go with June 25th if the board fully agrees that we, we can do that, just based on the superintendent being able to give us some additional artifacts that we don't currently have in our possession.
Board Member Cummings, sorry, I saw you nodding your head.
I'm in agreement with Dr. Campbell. If we're going to, I don't like making uninformed decisions. I, I need to have everything I need to make decisions. I don't remember why we went to that June, June 1st.
I think we went for stability. We were looking at having stability for our staff as we, we prepared for the next school year, that we wanted everything solidified, and so we started the next school year on solid ground. I believe that's the conversations we had.
Yep.
I, again, I don't like making impromptu or uninformed decisions. If there's data that we possibly need to make, to give accurate evaluation to the superintendent, we need to have that data.
Agreed, and maybe I was hyper-focused on Goal 1, but that's, that's always a conversation in the community, you know? And I want to be able to answer that with authority, and I want to be able to defend fully, you know, and when you raise the rest of them, that's, I certainly don't disagree. And, and as we've evolved in this process of appointed superintendent, I think, I'll just speak for myself, I've learned a lot along the way, and I've, again, observing other districts, they don't try to, if a superintendent separates June 1 to try to give stability, they don't rush normally to recruit, you know, do their search, interview, and find a superintendent by the time school starts, you know? They, they appoint a interim, usually someone from inside the district, and then they do their deliberate, do their deliberate, which would be, as it should be, I think, you know, to find the next one.
Yes.
I can be flexible. I would prefer that we stick with the contract date, but I also don't want to put a burden on our staff if we're asking them to gather information to share with us. It's the end of the school year, eight days left, trying to finish up testing, all of those things, and so, I'm just want to share that my, my reason for being flexible would be to provide a proper amount of time for our staff to collect and share with us data that's relevant to the evaluation tool.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm hearing what Board Member McKernan and Campbell are saying. Not only is it, did it give our staff the opportunity to do their job, they're also at the end of the year where they're doing some extra jobs.
Correct.
With graduation, and bachelor lord, and all those other things. We need to be fair and just to them, because this is not just superintendent, we're talking about staff in our district. So, again, I think we need to be judicious in how we handle this. I, I too like to deal with deadlines, and want to make sure that we're doing it the right way, in a legal way, but apparently, this was one of those unforeseen things that we did not take in consideration, because right now, our, our policy says one date, and the contract says something different. We need to correct that going forward. But, right now, we're a few days away from June 1.
Did you have something else, Board Member James?
When I was a teacher, and my principal did my evaluation, I had to provide the evidence for specifically Domain 4 of the Mckay stool. They didn't remind me to do that, they just said, this is the deadline, get it to me, or I'm going to go with whatever I have. I see heads nodding in the audience because they know that that is what happens. When I was an assistant principal, and I went and sat with my principal for my evaluation tool, I brought the evidence that I needed to support the work I was doing, and I knew the deadline for my evaluation. I don't believe that our staff throughout Marion County Public Schools should support the superintendent providing evidence to the board members for the work that's been done. As she previously said a year ago, the updates that are, we had this conversation a year ago, and she said, the updates I do regularly are the updates of the data, the superintendent's work sessions where we do a update on Goal 4, update on Goal 5. That is the way in which she has previously shared data with us as it pertains to the strategic plan, which is the root for her evaluation framework. If I reflect back, last year, very little data was provided to us beyond those updates that were, that were put together and presented to the board over the course of the previous year, because that was the, that was the root of the data. I'm sorry, but it's, it's my expectation that the employee, just as a leader on a campus, would ask for their employee to bring that data forward. I would not ask it to be on the bones of anyone sitting in the audience right now. I, I don't think that that would be appropriate. And I honestly, based on previous work, I don't think the superintendent would say that. She previously has said to us, when we did this last year, it's in the updates that are provided throughout the year on the strategic plan. Reference those PowerPoints. That is what she told us. Nothing has changed since then. It's the same exact tool with the same exact updates. Nothing has changed. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in consensus, I'm not wavering. My expectation is it's done by the deadline, because that is the expectation we hold our principals accountable for, that is the expectation we hold our teachers accountable for, that is the expectation our principals have to meet for all of the employees on their campus, regardless of their classification. I don't believe that it's something we should do. I don't. I think the data has been presented in work sessions throughout the strategic plan updates, and whatever other data that she wants to provide to us, she can via an email to all board members, or however that should be dispersed, just like we would if we were the employee being evaluated, and I have done countless times, as have the people shaking their head in the audience right now. You draft up what you've done, and you submit it to your, your leader for your evaluation.
Thank you Board Member James. Yeah, you know, we can continue to go at this all night. We also have identified a discrepancy between the contract and our board policy. We've been pretty engulfed with some things, and here we are. So, are we going to fix it? And I would like to see end-of-year data. You know, to me, that's only fair. Most, most evaluations are as of July 1, and that's usually has to do with the fiscal year. So, I, you know, sticking to, dying on a hill of June 1 for really, when there's a way to do it better and amend the contract, I think it was you that mentioned that, Board Member Campbell, you know, for the future, July 1. To me, that makes a lot more sense, because we can't control what the state does, but maybe that would give us a little bit more time to really have what we need. This is very high stakes. So, but again, I'm hearing that we have board member, one board member that is absolutely not in consensus and isn't going to waiver, so I think at this point, I'm going to request that, even though it's not typical, that we do a walk-on, let's go ahead and vote it out, let's get it on the record, and then we'll go from there. Wherever the law falls is how we'll proceed. So, let's...
Well, Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Now, we just had a couple of minutes ago about the walk-on.
Correct.
We did that. I'd rather for it to come back in another meeting, and put on the agenda the right way, that way, we're doing what we need to do.
Well, a walk-on isn't the wrong way, it's just not the way we've typically done it. I would definitely hear you on, what's, what's your proposal?
I mean, we kind of set a precedent just a couple of weeks ago, when they, when I brought something forward, and it was like, no, you can't do that. I'm so...
Well, it was during the meeting.
It was in comments, it was the same exact scenario. It was bringing something up in comments, I believe I was the one who brought it up.
Yes, you did.
And it was brought up in comments, and the guidance I was given was that we are not allowed, walk-on wasn't even mentioned, and it was that we are not allowed because we, the business of the board has completed, and we are not allowed to re-enter into the business, it will have to be an agenda item on a future meeting.
Yep, I thought that happened during the discussion on the item.
No.
Okay.
And so, what an option would be, is it can be placed on the agenda for the 21st or the 28th.
That agenda's already been published.
And with, and specifically, it can be placed on the agenda, even though it's been published, with the consent of the, of the board chair. And I've outlined that process and sent a memorandum in the past to the, the board regarding how that can be done. The preference would be not to, I mean, not to do it that way, but the fact is that we certainly are able to place an item on the agenda late. It is only with the consent of the board chair and with all board members being notified. So, I...
And just to be clear, if it doesn't go on the 21st and goes on the 28th and gets a majority no vote, we will then have not completed the evaluation tool, nor will we then have extended, changed the contract.
That's correct.
And we'll have put ourselves in the truest of pickles.
I don't like it. I believe that we're circling, after going down a very deep rabbit hole, into having a solution that we can't seem to come to consensus on. I'm just taking a minute to make sure that everybody's said what they want to say, has thought it through. The whole district is counting on us to make the most measured and rational decision. It affects a lot of people. So, I just assume, well, I'm not even going to read, I think we all know where each other stands, and we're at the point where, while there is a lot going on with graduations, getting information that we need to make the best decision on our evaluations of our superintendent, is going to be a, it's going to be a heavy lift, but we're used to heavy lifts. And as I continue to look at this tool, we have had updates throughout the school year on each of these goals. I, for the reasons that I've stated over and over again, because of, you know, community perception, would be much more comfortable with a lot more impactful data in Goal 1, but at this point, I would propose going ahead and meeting the June 1st timeline with a conversation very soon about looking at what other districts are doing, and if July 1 seems to be the more common practice, making that adjustment. You know, our graduations end right at the end of May, and then the superintendent's evaluation is due basically like four days later. So, to me, it seems like a really compressed timeline that we're, the tail's wagging the dog here. But we've talked about all the options, and I don't know that there's much more, more to say at this point. Dr. Gullett, do you have any other input?
I'm just, thank you Madam Chair, I'm just looking at the calendar, I mean, with their number of events, just understanding it'll have to be early morning, probably night meetings, just with the number of events this end of school year.
For our briefings with you?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as everybody's okay with that.
That's something that the board is prepared to commit to prioritizing this?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll have to. Cummings?
I prefer to have time, but whatever, wherever we're going to go with this, we just need to make a go with where we're going. I, I prefer to have the time to do it the right way, but obviously, I'm in the minority on that, it seems like.
No, I don't think you're in the minority, we just didn't figure out a way to do it, and meet, us meet and meet the timeline. Well, and let's be clear, I haven't heard that there is, if there's a way to do this that is within the legal realm, then I'm, it's, it's not, we're looking for options here, it's a unique situation.
Well, with the permutation of issues that have come up tonight, what I can tell you is, I'll be happy to go back and do independent research and find out if there's any other option that I can find. If there is an option I can find, I don't want to discuss it with individual board members, because it may come back before you for a vote. I will email all board members with those potential options, and with the board chair's permission, if any of those options work, to place something on an agenda that is necessary, we can go that route. But I'm not hopeful that I immediately can see, I mean, that I'm going to find any particular, you know, legal solution to what is essentially a procedural problem here. And, I mean, I doubt that I am going to find case law that speaks to something like this. It is more something that within Robert's Rules of Order, I may find some specific thing that allows us... specific thing that allows us to do, but those are, those are abstract things that I have not, nothing immediately comes to mind, and I don't think it would in, in, in these sort of situations. We, we are not, I mean, I'm trying to give you as accurate answers as possible. I don't think it's a lack of legal advice, or a lack of knowledge, or a lack of even trying from each of your perspectives. But this is an issue that, the complexity isn't legal complexity, it's situational complexity.
Board Member James?
I know I have a board briefing next Wednesday, already scheduled in on the calendar. That's obviously past the Tuesday deadline, but if, if the chair is going to offer the grace to all board members, that a template will be placed on the agenda on, on the 21st when it's published, and all signed evaluations will be uploaded, once the signature has been acquired from the superintendent and uploaded from, I believe, Ms. Morant's department, then, I, I mean, I can't speak for anyone else's schedule, but I know I have a board briefing scheduled next week already. So I would say the majority of us probably already have a board briefing scheduled. Dr. Campbell, you have a board briefing scheduled?
Mine's Friday.
Next Friday?
Yes.
Vice Chair, do you have a board briefing scheduled?
Thursday.
Thursday. Mine is Wednesday. So we all have one over the course of the week, so it's going to be varying timelines, obviously, depending on when our meeting is. But outside of having to schedule an additional meeting on the superintendent's calendar, we all already have a standing meeting, other than, I don't know, Reverend Cummings, you didn't share whether you had one scheduled or not, but the, four of the five board members already have a meeting with the superintendent scheduled. So it's not even like we would have to go beyond to find another opportunity, because presumably, we're all going to be meeting and interfacing with her one-on-one. So...
Well, it's, I can make myself available. You can already have it on my calendar. You know, I, I want to bring this to, to closure and get it done. We've all shared our, our doubts, we've all shared our, our input, but that will just galvanize me to make sure I get what I feel like I need, so that what I put on paper is valid, you know? So there we are. And if, as far as permission, you know, to add it as an agenda item, you know, I'll just say that right now, yes. You know, we'll, we'll put it on there.
And I'll, I'll tell you, that is not really something that entered my calculus here because of the fact, I mean, we, that is an option. However, it is, as pointed out, not clear that that would survive anyway. So from what I'm hearing, it, it appears...
What are you saying, adding the evaluation tools?
Adding the evaluation tool. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
That's much better. I thought we were going back to trying to add another vote.
We're not digressing again.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if, if we can just make it clear, since I know my briefing is on Friday of next week, so if perhaps whomever is the collector of these, last time it was, we, I think CC'd them to Ms. Morant and Attorney Powers, that all board members have them, and then Board Chair giving the approval authority for them to then be uploaded into board docs on Friday afternoon. So if we perhaps, I understand that that will be late, because for our May 28 meeting, that'll only be like three or four days before. But if you give the approval for that to occur, then if we had all of our signed evaluations by the 24th of May in the afternoon, those could be uploaded then. And that...
Ms. Martinez, do you see any barriers with that? You're good? Okay. So that would be Friday, May 24th?
24th, yes.
Would be the deadline to have them completed, signed, and sent to Ms. Morant and copied to Attorney Powers.
Board Chair?
Yes?
The only thing, because it has already been published, Ms. Morant would not be able to upload them. She would have to actually put them on another meeting and then move them to the 28th, unless she sent them to me directly, and then I upload them.
Fine.
Because they've already, it's already been published.
Okay. That behind the scenes part, if you can assure that it's going to get done, that's what we need to know.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
So for clarity, for clarity, for clarity, all evaluations will be done, board briefings and done, briefings with the superintendent be done by the 24th, and submitted with signatures.
Evaluations, yes. Each of our evaluations will be submitted with our signature on the 24th by, is it, does it have to be noon? Does it have to be 5?
If I, if I can remember back, I don't actually believe we submitted our own evaluations, because we assigned it, and then we, I believe Dr. Gullett had her secretaries collect her signatures and then submitted them.
Right.
So I think we're speaking about the process in a way that is not reflective of how it's occurred previously. I believe that we signed it and gave it to the superintendent. She signed at her leisure, and then her staff secretaries provided to Ms. Morant.
The scoring sheet. There's a scoring sheet.
That's how you recall?
Yes.
That's that.
Yes. There's a scoring sheet that's submitted.
So, so, so we can send our, our signed copy to Ms. Morant, but that will not be the official, because it has to be signed by the superintendent, and then Ms. Morant's department took all of the stores and put them into the culmination.
Okay.
So just to be clear on the process.
Okay. So at our individual briefings, that's when we should sign them and...
Yeah.
Give it, leave them with Dr. Gullett to...
Correct.
Be uploaded. Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you. We will move on. There never seems to be a good time to discuss addressing expulsion matters, but I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through April 10, 2024. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 24-257E, JD 24-259, JD 24-260, JD 24-261, JD 24-262E, JD 24-263, JD 24-264, JD 24-266, JD 24-267, JD 24-268E, JD 24-269E, JD 24-270E, JD 24-271, JD 24-272E, JD 24-273, JD 24-276E, JD 24-277E, JD 24-278, and JD 24-279, with educational services for the remainder of the 2023, 2024 school year, and the first, second, and third quarters of the 2024, 2025 school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously 5-0. There being no further business to discuss, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously 5-0. We are adjourned at 8:29 PM. Thank you.